Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this May 21st, 2025 meeting of the Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors. Thank you. We're going to start the meeting with two interviews for our advisory boards and commissions. The first interview is Mr. Chuck Lustig. Are you in the room? Come on up, sir. Welcome. Good. Can you check to make sure you can hear you in the microphone?
One, two, three, four.
Do we got a thumbs up?
One, two, three, four.
Unless he turns the light on, we're good. So he hasn't turned it.
It's on now.
There we go. So, welcome and thank you for putting your hat in the ring with your resume. Normally how we do this is just give you a couple of minutes to introduce yourself and tell us why you want to do this to yourself and whatever boards and commissions you might be interested in. So we get a good feel because we do have a lot of vacancies at the moment. So we're trying to push people in there and then I'll give the board a chance to ask you some questions if they have any.
My name is Chuck Lustig. I'm a 31-year resident of Lower Makefield. Lived in the same house for the last 31 years. I'm recently retired. I don't plan on moving, so I'm going to be around for a while. In retirement, I want to give back to the community. I joined the Kiwanis Club about six months ago and this is the second thing that I'm getting involved in. I know what the major issues are in the township, you know, land development, emergency services, budgetary issues, crisis management. My history is I worked for ABC News for 30 years, 28 of which I was in charge of international news coverage. I traveled the world and negotiated projects with rogue regimes in places like North Korea and Cuba. After that, after I left ABC, I went to work for a human rights organization called Human Rights Watch. It's a global human rights organization based in the Empire State Building. We had about 80 researchers researching human rights abuses around the world. I ran operations for the organization, so I was in charge of finance, HR, and IT. I reported into the budget audit and HR committees of the board of directors of the organization. I have crisis manager experience both at ABC News and at Human Rights Watch. And as a side note, I grew up next to Kennedy Airport, so I'm fully aware of issues about expanding airports.
Does that make you Ozy or Howard Beach?
Howard Beach.
Welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate it. Are you from the area?
Jamaica.
Okay.
LaGuardia.
Okay.
Is he up? LaGu- yeah, far ahead.
I should say I have three kids that went to Pensbury through Pensbury. One is an occupational therapist now in Montgomery County. My oldest daughter is a school psychologist also in Montgomery County. And my son is a clinical psychologist and he works with veterans at Albuquerque, New Mexico, the Veterans Administration there.
Am I seeing that you only have three Emmy Awards to your name?
I only have three Emmy Awards. That's correct.
That's, in addition to some other pretty prestigious, it's, your resume is impressive. That's easy to have to say.
I worked hard.
I can tell. And you're good at what you do, obviously. I'll just, I'll start with board members, just go down and see if they have any questions.
Yeah, I was hoping for somebody a little bit more accredited, but since, you know, no, thank you so much for volunteering. I think you'll be a great asset to the committee and I really appreciate you putting your application in. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Sure. I think, you know, your experience in dealing with rogue regimes such as North Korea, somewhat helpful. Somewhat helpful.
I actually traveled there seven times in the course of my career.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Wow. Okay. I've got lots of questions, unfortunately. We'd love to chat with you further, especially about your Human Rights Watch work as well. Is there a particular area that's most interesting to you?
You know, I was looking at the list of committees and I'm obviously willing to serve wherever the, you know, you guys think is the best place. Obviously, the Electronic Media Advisory Committee might be a good place to put me. The, you know, Airport Review Panel because of my past experiences dealing in living in a place that had an expanding airport over the course of my lifetime. I play golf at Lower Makefield, I mean, Makefield Islands. Mike Atero was my coach when I first started playing four years ago, so I'm fully, you know, interested in the success of that place. So, but really, I'm open to anything. I have, you know, HR experience, I have audit experience, I have finance experience, so.
Okay. Yep. Like I was saying, we do have several openings and we're almost through our list of folks that we're interviewing.
Okay.
So we're trying to get through the list and then kind of step back and say, okay, who said they liked what would be a good fit and then try to.
Sure.
Put people in there, as you can imagine. But, yeah, I'll, I'll keep going down the line with, with questions.
I don't have any questions, but thank you very much for applying.
Sure.
Supervisor Blundy?
We're both from Queens and we've both been in the DMZ.
You've been to the DMZ on the southern side?
On the southern side and the tunnels.
Okay.
So, he's in.
And are you a Knicks fan?
I am a Knicks fan.
Oh, God.
Oh, yeah.
We got to get going.
Changed my mind.
Are you kidding? Just ruined it.
No, no. I'm a Celtics fan, so you, yeah, that was a rough one.
Six.
Still hurt from that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, thank you. As I said, well, it might take a few weeks, but appreciate you coming out and putting your name in the, in the ring and I'm sure we'll get you on something pretty soon.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Nice to meet you.
And a Knicks fan is darn near perfect.
I know.
That many Knicks fans, though.
Yes.
And.
Oh, the other side.
You all right?
Thank you. I see you weren't using it.
Okay. Yep. Next up, Stacy Caspin in there? Come on up. So I don't know how much of that you just heard, but I'll give my little intro spiel real quick. One, thank you for applying to be on one of our boards and committees. Two, normally what we do is give you a couple of minutes to introduce yourself, a little bit about your background. If there are any specific committees that you're interested in, tell us which ones and why. And then after you do that, we just kind of go down the line and see if anyone has any questions for you.
Okay, great.
All right. Have at it.
If you can hear me. Hi, I'm Stacy. Thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate it. So I've been living in Lower Makefield for 12 years now. I have two daughters. They are both in Penwood Middle School. And I am most interested in the Park and Rec Board. I think that I could be an asset to it. My background is actually funny, it's also media. I did start in New York. I was a television producer. I made my way here and I've been freelance publicist for many years now. I work with many well-known brands. I get their message out in the media, whatever platform they're interested in. So that is my background in PR and communications. Specifically, Parks and Rec, I've been interested in. My family has been taking advantage of the many programs, the many parks in the area. We just love it and it's something I'm going to give back to. And I also do write a weekly email newsletter for Bucks County where I tell everyone what's going on, what to do on the weekends. It's really taken off the last few years and I really enjoy it. It's been such a pleasure to do it and keep everyone informed. I am well aware of the programs in the township. I do include them every week on the newsletter, make sure everyone knows what's going on. And so I think I'd be a good asset.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll start from the other side of the desk. Supervisor Blundy?
So not from Queens?
No. I lived in New York for a while.
Thank you. Thank you so much for volunteering.
Thank you.
You're up.
I don't have any questions either, but thank you very much for applying.
Thanks.
Supervisor Lewis?
Let's see, I was going through looking for Emmys. Sorry, but.
That's a tough act.
I have to tell you a word if that counts.
Yeah, okay. No, I was like surprised because you had Court TV and some others because there's an early, that was a really interesting entrepreneurial company and how that got started and really took off. So I was just curious about that. And I'm going to the Lower Bucks Family Events. I'm going to have to subscribe to it. How do you monetize your newsletter, if you don't mind me asking? Or you don't?
Advertising available.
Okay.
If local businesses are interested.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious. Or do you have a, how many subscribers do you have?
I have 1,900.
1,900, okay. Good.
Mostly new town, early parents.
Okay. Awesome. No, that's, that's helpful. And of the ones we talked about, perhaps the Electronic Media Advisory might be a fit as well, as well as Parks and Rec. So, yeah, no, definitely appreciate that. And that's all I had.
No questions, but thank you so much for volunteering.
And I'm signing up now, just so you know. And it's lowerbucksfamilievents.com, in case you're wondering.
Appreciate it.
I'll do that one, too.
So you're at 1901.
Thank you.
My, my kids are a hair younger than yours, but I'm guessing that you're going to give us some good ideas of things to do.
I need to stop in there.
I don't have any further questions, but like I was just saying, we're trying to go through all of our interviews right now. We're more than halfway through, I believe. So we're, and then we have several openings. So we're going to, once we get through the interviews, probably in the next meeting or two, we'll start to position folks and get back to you on, on where we think you'd be a good fit.
Okay, great.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I will call our public meeting to order. And would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Quick roll call. Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
Supervisor Ross?
Here.
Supervisor Lewis?
Here.
Supervisor McCartney?
Present.
And Supervisor Grant, you're also here. Community announcements. Reminder during this portion of the agenda, residents and youth organizations may call in to make a special announcement or contact the township at admin@lmT.org to request a special announcement be added to the agenda. Lower Makefield Township's Environmental Advisory Council, with the participation of the Yardley Refillery, great little business on the corner there, is sponsoring a free microplastics lecture from Mike Wildbacher, apologies if I mispronounced that, a noted naturalist, on Saturday, May 31st at 10:00 AM, right here at the Township Building. On Sunday, June 1st, Amy's Kisses will be hosting their 11th annual Walk to Remember at Tyler State Park. This meaningful event raises awareness about domestic violence while inspiring change through education. Participants will take steps to create a future free from violence, standing together in remembrance and hope. Register by visiting www.amyskisses, A-M-Y-S-K-I-S-S-E-S, dot org. Do any supervisors have any other announcements they would like to make? I'll make one. Yesterday was May 20th, which was primary day in Pennsylvania and Lower Makefield. Would just like to congratulate everyone that participated in that and the winners. For those of you who were not successful in moving along to the general election, we still want to say thank you for, for stepping up. In particular, Supervisor Blundy, who's been with us now for, was this your seventh, eighth year now together? You know, and actually Supervisor McCartney as well, in talking about next year, you know, I think it saddens me that you're not moving on to the general. However, we have a good six, seven months of hard work to do and I'm looking forward to working with, with both of you this year to get some really important stuff done. But again, thank you for all you've both done. With that, I will move on to item number five, which is public comment on non-agenda items. So the way with public comment, what it is, if there's an item on the agenda that you have a comment on, we ask that you provide your comment during those agenda items only. We also have a three-minute time limit on your, on public comments on, on non-agenda items, which, which we keep. And then if you happen to hear somebody else essentially make the same comment as you, we just ask that you try not to be redundant or repetitive so that we can keep the meeting moving along. Otherwise, please come up to the podium if, and state your name and whether or not you're a Lower Makefield Township President. The podium over here, please.
Hello, my name is Uri Finer. I am a resident of Yardley Borough. I'm also the Vice President of Council and the Chair of Public Works. Nice to be here. You have some more fancy equipment than we have. And I did spend a year when I was three years old in Kew Gardens, so we've got that.
[laughing]
I'm. Um, I'm here to first thank you for the work you're doing on Taylorsville Road, and just to update you, we're a few days away from hearing what hopefully is our final round of revision from PennDOT, so we'll be able to go out to bid for the North Main Sidewalk Phase Three and the drainage there. It's gonna tie in beautifully with the work that you all are doing, so I'm, I'm happy to see that coming together. And I'm here because I want to talk to you about the West Afton Avenue Sidewalk. This is something that I get asked about all the time, I'm sure you do also. Um, and I think that's really the most crucial gap in walkability between our two municipalities that exists, and because it links thousands of people. For your residents, they can come to Yardley and enjoy downtown Yardley and the restaurants and all that we have to offer. And for our residents, especially our teenagers and kids, they can go up to the library, the parks, um, the pool, and all that you have. So, uh, of course, people do traverse that stretch a lot, and there's a short segment, part of it is Lower Makefield, part of it is Yardley, that does not have a sidewalk. And I see people there all the time, I use it, and so it would be just so nice to get that done and close that gap. Work was done years ago, uh, and it was kind of, sort of, you know, maybe it got deprioritized from both municipalities. So I'm here today because, uh, we would, we would like to apply for a grant. Uh, and this grant is the Department of Conserva, of Community and Economic Development of Pennsylvania has the Multimodal Transportation Fund Program. It's due July 31st. For this year, the match requirement is waived, which means it's a 100% grant. Yardley Borough would like to apply in partnership with Lower Makefield. So, if we're two municipalities applying for it, our chances of receiving that grant are way higher. With the way things are going, I don't know how, how much longer, or if ever again, we'll have this opportunity of no match, but I think it's kind of like, uh, to me, it's a no-brainer. We could actually apply for this, get it funded, and however long it takes us to actually make it happen, that's, that's fine, we'll know it's funded. And, uh, so it's a great opportunity, and my council has told me, if you guys will do it, you all will do it, and we'll do it. So, we need you to partner with us, and that's what I'm here to ask for.
Yeah.
And you don't have to answer me right now.
We, we appreciate your comment.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I will say that our, our number, just for those watching at home, our number one priority right now, from a sidewalk perspective, and we do have a lot of sidewalk plans in the works across the township. Right now, as many are aware, Taylorsville Road in front of the Mapleville neighborhood, which is our, our number one priority, it's about a two and a half million dollar project, we've only gotten a, a fit 20% of that funded so far. So that's gonna be our number one priority from a sidewalk perspective until it's fully funded. After that, we'll start filling in the gaps, is, is what our board's focused on right now. Not that any other projects are not important and looking forward to executing them, but our, our number one is getting that Taylorsville project done, because it's not only a pedestrian access thing, it's, it's also quality of life, safety, stormwater management, and flood, uh, flooding issue that we desperately have to address. But, um, it's, it will remain, your, the Afton Ave will remain on our radar, but I think in terms of moving forward with similar applications in the foreseeable future, it's gonna be focused on Taylorsville, so that we can make that full connection to North Main. But, thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, um, I am a, an LMG resident. Uh, I just want to-
Oh, please state your name.
Hanoshak. Um, so I live at Sandy Row, near the corner of Afton. Um, I just, I'm not gonna prolong, take up too much time, I just want to support the Afton, um, sidewalk project, and Taylorsville is very important to finish that out, but also I would like to sort of point attention to the fact that the West Afton area is extremely terrifyingly dangerous for our children to be walking up and down that street as cars fly by, and even accompanying my own children, it's really scary. Um, so anyway, like, this is, this is definitely a safety issue as well. Um, I would hate for anyone, especially a child, to get hurt traversing up and down that street. Um, so, we would love to keep this on the radar, uh, if possible.
Okay, appreciate your comments. Any other public comment? Anyone online?
No.
No one on the phone as well?
No.
All right, thank you. Great definitive. All right, with that, I will close, uh, public comment, move on to item number six, the consent agenda items. Is, any board members want to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Um, would anyone like to make a motion on the consent agenda items?
No moved.
Second.
All right, with that, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to item number seven, community development. It's the Consider Conditional Approval of the Preliminary Final Land Development and Major Subdivision Plan for Woodbury Grove Investors LP, otherwise known by most of us as the Wright Farm Plan. I believe we have the project team here to present.
Good evening.
Good evening, along with our solicitor, I'm sure, they'll be some back and forth.
Yep.
Any, Adam Sills, anything you need to introduce, or just let Mr. Murphy get to it?
No, I just would let the applicant and Mr. Murphy proceed.
Okay. And I guess I'll intro this by saying we do have a recommendation of approval of the plan from the Planning Commission from their last meeting. Okay.
And, uh, what I'd like to do to start and maybe expedite the conversation is to bring everyone and the audience up to speed on the steps that we have taken since that Planning Commission meeting, when we did receive that recommendation. And what I'd like to do is go over five or six principal things, aspects of the plan that we've added, deleted, or revised, and as I highlight them, I'll have Justin Genati at the far end, our engineer from Dynamic, highlight on the plan where those changes took place.
Mr. Murphy, I know we, I know Justin Pierce, you have hard copies in front of you, we have hard copies in front of, are you gonna be using the screen as he did at the Planning Commission as well?
We did send in the exhibits in video form, so it might help for the public to put on.
At, I agree. Is that something we-
Yeah, Jim Majewski, uh, has, has that, uh, he's able to share.
I just, oh, I couldn't see it back there. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I know the public wants to, I know the public wants to see things.
Right.
Jimmy, I would just start with-
Load them up, let's go.
Yeah, and we were getting the red light flashing, I just, I think that's-
Yeah, get closer.
Reminder about the microphone. It's also for me, too.
That was for you, Dan.
That was good.
I'm trying. Well, I'll remind you by reminding myself, how about that?
Okay, so, uh, I guess perhaps most notably, uh, the plan on the screen is in fact the latest revised plan that we submitted late last week. Um, and when it comes back on the screen, I'll pick it up.
I love it.
Okay, so, um, most notably, what you don't see on the plan is a suggested write-out movement that was the subject of some topic of conversation when we were at the Planning Commission, and as we ended the conversation with the Planning Commission, uh, the suggestion was that township staff and administration discuss whether or not that option was worth further conversation with PennDOT to determine its approvability. Uh, the following week after the Planning Commission meeting, we were advised that there was no support or interest on the part of the administration to pursue it further, so we did not and have not, and the plan's been revised to remove that.
And for your information, I, as the Planning Commission liaison, I brought it up to the Board of Supervisors at our last public meeting to get feedback from the Board, and that was the unanimous consent of the Board.
Okay. So, uh, while we're on the topic of PennDOT generally, since the Planning Commission meeting, you should be aware that PennDOT has now issued a permit for the use of Patterson Lane, where it intersects the bypass, for both emergency access and a construction entrance. Uh, that was pending when we were at your Planning Commission meeting, but didn't have it in hand. We now have it in hand, and have provided copies of that permit to the township staff. Uh, the second item that, uh, was the topic of some discussion at the last Planning Commission meeting was the tree survey that we had performed previously. Based on the comments and feedback we received at the Planning Commission, we had our arborists go back out and expanded the scope of the tree study to include every tree, uh, on the site, and provided an updated report of his analysis of the health of those trees to the township, which everybody should have. Um, again, I would, as we said at the Planning Commission meeting, remind everyone that, um, regardless of the health of those trees, and many of them are dead disease, dying category, we have not sought, nor are we seeking any credit for those trees. We are going to replace the trees, all of them, that would be removed in accordance with the, uh, Tree Replacement Ordinance that's in effect in the township, and that is outside of the next topic I'm gonna bring up as well. So, uh, I hope that clarifies, or maybe, um, answers those types of questions that we fielded at the last Planning Commission meeting. On trees, uh, there was a lot of discussion over the last couple Planning Commission meetings about the treatment of the front area that was previously labeled in an earlier iteration of the plan as available for farming. Before the last Planning Commission meeting, we'd gotten feedback indicating that, and that, no, uh, that probably isn't an opportune area for farming. Uh, would you entertain the quote "reforestation" of that area? The plan that is on the screen now depicts the entirety of that area being reforested in accordance with a reforestation plan that we did submit to the township. Um, and, um, it shows plus or minus 1,100 new trees being planted in that area, 10 acres, plus or minus 10 acres. Um, so, related to that is a question that came up more from an engineering standpoint that dealt with how closely we could, with this plan, comply with the current township stormwater ordinance that was not in effect at the time that this plan was in fact submitted. And what we previously advised the staff and township generally about was that this plan as currently designed, without the reforestation element, we would get today to about 75% of meeting those criteria in the enhanced new stormwater ordinance that doesn't apply to us. Once the reforested area matures, in its several years, based on engineering criteria, not me talking as a layperson, but, uh, I'm told that that increases, the reforested, reforested area would increase the ability to comply with your current ordinance by another 10%. So, in a few years, as these trees start to mature, the stormwater design of this plan would get to somewhere north of 85% of the standards and criteria that exist in your ordinance today. So, I wanted to report everybody, and I think Justin could confirm that.
Correct. Accurate.
Really, another way to, from an engineering perspective, I'm, I'm assuming that's dropping your curve number because of cover type changes?
It is, too. And if you, and just to back up even one step further, the, the stormwater design's conservative from the start. It's a farm field today. Uh, we have to, as part of our calculations, treat it as a meadow condition, so the runoff that we are basically adhering to from a pre-development condition is significantly less than what leaves that property today. So what that just means, from a layperson perspective, is the stormwater's already been overdesigned and, and all, oh, super conservative. The additional trees that we are planting, those 1,100 to 1,200 trees that we are being planted in the open space, in addition to the other trees already being installed as part of your ordinance, will bring us very close to compliance with your new ordinance, as those trees mature.
Well, we do comply with the new ordinance as to rate. It would only be as to volume that there would be a shortfall.
Yeah, and that was, that was reported at the Planning Commission, Mr. Graner, you heard that, too. So we do meet the rate control requirements of the new ordinance with our current design. Uh, we were just a little short on volume from the, from the new ordinance to the current ordinance, which we are grandfathered under, but we would be 85% of the volume requirement.
How about, how about the quality?
Water quality was always met. We, we met that under both conditions, so, and of course, 1,100 more trees would just make it that much better.
Yeah, okay. Uh, two other principal items, uh, that were the subject of prior discussion, I want to highlight, and Justin, if you go up to the plan on the screen, we had previously shown a portion of the northern boundary line of the site with the farmland preservation piece that we had originally proposed to buffer. Uh, there was a comment made, uh, at the last Planning Commission meeting about extending that buffer along the entire northern common boundary line, and that plan now shows that on our lots, not on the farmland preservation property side. So, um, that would then present a consistent buffer along that whole northern boundary.
That's correct.
Um, the other topic that's been a lot of back and forth at the last meeting involved the status of Patterson Lane. Um, all of us have done some further research, title searches, et cetera, to better understand the current status and then what would be proposed. Uh, as we have all learned, um, originally, and Justin can highlight this on the other plan that's on the screen, Patterson Lane was a private drive, this is pre-1960 era when the area of I-95 was condemned. But before that condemnation, Patterson Drive extended on the east side of what is I-95, I-295. With the advent of the condemnation for 95, Patterson Lane, that private lane, was eliminated, and the service road that's highlighted in yellow, that Justin's highlighting with his pen, was created as part of the PennDOT condemnation and was labeled as a service road associated with that. At some point after that, Lower Makefield Township took control of Patterson Lane, and all of us, including Jim Majewski, confirmed that township is receiving liquid fuels payments on an annualized basis from PennDOT, reflecting its status as a road that's being owned and maintained by the township. So, in conversations that we've had since the Planning Commission discussion, and as we said at the Planning Commission, uh, we are going to continue to maintain, we, the applicant slash HOA, once the project is built, would continue to, uh, have ownership of that Patterson Lane area. We would continue to maintain it in its current location. Uh, Justin can, can highlight where we would propose to put a bollard for emergency purposes, but as part of that establishment of our obligation to maintain Patterson Lane, we've agreed with the administration that we would post a $25,000 maintenance escrow at the commencement of the project to ensure and give comfort to everyone that Patterson Lane will be maintained by the HOA. So, uh, that would be a rainy day fund in the event the HOA failed to meet its obligations to maintain it, but we would, as a condition of any approval, agree to post that $25,000 escrow for that purpose. So, Justin, just highlight the voices about-
One, one further point, too. It was a, a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting about what was going to change about Patterson Lane from pre to post. Um, Ms. Stillplane showed up, her property's all the way at the top, just with concern that we would be modifying it, restricting access, changing our access. So this exhibit was prepared, and you can see, the yellow highlighted line from the intersection down at the bottom of the page at the bypass, all the way up on the current, current condition and, and position where the road is now, to the property all the way at the top, we're proposing no modifications to that road, that is gonna stay as is, the access is gonna be unrestricted and remain exactly as it is today. The only thing that we are adding, as you can see at the, like, the terminus of this street right here, is going to be, one, a driveway extension, should they want to take access to their property through our, through our site, but it's gonna be chained and bollarded off for emergency access only. So, emergency vehicles will be able to come off of Patterson Lane, we do have our PennDOT HOP permit, which allows us to do that. Emergency vehicles would then come in, remove the chain and bollard to access the community. Residents of this community would not be able to do the reverse, they would not be able to come and go through Patterson Lane. That is only for emergency vehicles. That chain and bollard's gonna remain in place at all times, um, and is not meant for- That chain and bollard is going to remain in place at all times and is not meant for resident use. So just want to be clear because that was a, a large part of the planning commission discussion.
Just, Justin read, well Patterson Lane, I haven't driven down it, so I don't know what the current condition is. Does it need to be repaved? Is it in good shape? Does it have okay drainage? Does it need culverts or anything like that?
It does not. It is, it is in good shape, and it's, there's no need for other improvements at this time.
Okay, and future improvements or repaving would be the responsibility of the HOA since...
Right. I think those are the principal highlights or changes to the plan since our last conversation. We talked at length previously at prior meetings about the waivers. They have not changed, so they're fairly innocuous in my view. So if anybody has any other questions or comments about the current plan, happy to address them at this point.
And I've been looking at this for a lot longer than the rest of the board, so they may ask some repeat questions and give them a chance to do so, right? On Patterson Lane, if in the future, let's say there are some potholes that develop or whatever, it just needs to be repaved, it's mostly access for the Dillaplane's. What is, how, and let's say the HOA doesn't really want to do it, or they're slow in doing it or whatever, what recourse would the Dillaplane's have to kind of enforce that, to make sure that they have a rightable?
I'm sure your solicitor will tell, will enter into some formal maintenance and operation agreement with the HOA to ensure whatever protocol the township wants to set up to ensure that the issues are addressed promptly.
That is correct. The township would have the ability to monitor it and make the decision whether or not it's acceptable, and then contact the HOA to make the necessary repairs.
Okay.
And if they don't, then we have the $25,000 escrow, which I presume will be replenished to keep at $25,000 if in fact the township is obligated or required to make repairs.
And this could be for either one of the attorneys in the room. There was some discussion at the last planning commission meeting about going from a public to private, or private to public and public to private road and the legality of that. Could you speak on a public road going to private ownership, just to clarify that that is above board and normal?
It is. I'm not sure, I'm not even sure that for the many years you guys have been collecting liquid fuels, I'm not sure that title actually ever changed from PennDOT. We've never found, and I don't know Maureen or Jim found, any document that actually transferred title from the PennDOT ownership, which we can confirm, to them. So either way, there's, there's not an issue with taking over a public road. It happens frequently.
You can concur.
I do. Mr. Murphy's correct. Our searches sort of end at a point where there's no, any clear cut evidence, no recording that shows that the township does own that property.
Okay. So from a process standpoint, would you prefer that I ask for a motion for some type of motion, or would you, would it be okay to have the board ask some questions before we look to make a motion?
On this particular instance or...
On this, on the, on the plan itself, since we're opening it up to questions at the moment, how would you like?
No, I think you should make a motion.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So a motion in a second allows us to open, open comment to the board and then public comment. It's not necessarily going to stay that way. There could be amendments, conditions added, et cetera, but it's just a way formally to get the conversation started, just so everyone knows, we're not trying to move super fast on this. All right. That being said, I'll open it up. Like I said, I've, I've been looking at this for months now. I have some questions too, but I'd like to give the board a chance to just kind of wrap their head around the plan since we haven't seen it yet. Go ahead.
So the first question, and I think I verified this, was how far up does the noise barriers from 295 go? They go all the way up to the Newtown sign?
No, you're talking on our side. I mean, there's, there's obviously the other application here, but no, the noise barrier actually stops at the Dillaplane property. It does not go all the way down.
All right. Okay. And then the fire access compliance, did the township fire marshal approve the 30-foot cart weight width and waivers for driveway design?
So there's... There's two parts to that. This is working now. There was a comment, and we did discuss this at the planning commission, I should have got into it tonight too, the, where the connection is to Surrey Lane. What we were originally doing from a traffic calming perspective is keeping the road width the same, that 30-foot road width, and putting a median in the center so that as drivers come in, there's concerns about speeding and, you know, the connectivity from the adjoining neighborhood, the existing neighborhood. So what we were proposing to do is just shrink up those cartways to slow down the flow of traffic between there. Fire marshal came back and basically said, understanding the traffic concerns, he still needs that full width of a travel lane to get through. So the concession was at the planning commission that we are going to make those lanes on either side of the median a little bit wider, still not the full width that's required. Fire marshal is going to be okay with it because we're going to meet their minimum. We maintain the full access that they're required. So that, we did satisfy that concern.
Okay, so then they, they calculated the largest apparatus, all that, okay, okay. On stormwater management, these are, so one of the waivers he asked for was, the code requires 19 test pits to be done, and you are asking for a waiver for 13. So can you give me a reason why the waiver's needed and sort of details about the test pits?
Sure. So your ordinance, and we run into this, I've done a few projects in your township, we run into this a lot. So your ordinance has a requirement that is strictly based on acreage, number of tests per acre. When it comes to stormwater design, obviously the stormwater systems are designed to be at localized low points and natural drainage patterns where they belong. Also, when you do test pits across the whole site, you find out infiltration on this site was not viable. So no matter how many test pits we did, the soils were consistent throughout the whole profile of the site, so it didn't make sense to do additional test pits. So the stormwater design that we are proposing tonight is not based on infiltration because there is no infiltration results on this property. So the waiver strictly requested that based on our geotechnical engineer's experience, additional test pits are still going to result in the same decision. There's, there's no infiltration viable. We do not need to do the additional test pits to make the stormwater design work.
And then, so how did the engineer do the test pits again? Well, you...
Based on, it's double ring infiltration, so they go out there and they dig test pits and they sit ring infiltration.
Yep, yeah, yeah. Okay, cool. And then the basins have to drain within 24 to 72 hours. Based on the stuff you're talking about, it seems like you're 85, 86% of our new ordinance drainage, do we think, I mean, have you done modeled that at all?
Yes, yeah, no, everything's been modeled, everything's been reviewed by your engineer.
What's the rough estimate in terms of how quickly things would drain based on different weather events?
So it, it varies based on the storm. We do, we do meet the ordinance requirements. I don't know the exact number here tonight with me, but you're, we did go through your ordinance. So they're, they're bioinfiltration basins and they're evapotranspiration based basins, recently rain gardens that are centered in the site. So they operate under different criteria, but we did design them in accordance with your ordinance. And again, we do have our PennDOT, we do have our PADEP MPDS permit.
Okay.
And your stormwater, and your, the stormwater design's been reviewed and essentially approved by your engineer at this point.
Okay. And so with that, obviously, the last time, or one of the times we looked at it, we had fewer trees ringing the circus, circumference of the open space area. Your plan now is 1,000 trees to get us up to that, that point then. Would that, as those mature, say 10 years out, 15 years out, do we get past the 85% mark? I know you can't 100%...
So the way the calculations...
Give you an idea on that.
The, the way the calculations work is, no, you would not go beyond that. Every tree gets a certain quantity of volume reduction that's associated with it. Basically, unless you plant more trees, you're not going to get more credit in accordance with the PABMP manual, which is what our governing body is for doing these calculations. Now, I will add that we did, since we ran that calculation, we did extend that top buffer along the entirety of that top northern property line. Those are some additional trees that are being planted. We did not come tonight with saying that's, we're probably closer to 88, 89% once you add those trees in. But no, the 1,100 trees which are being planted in that open space will bring us up to an official number of about 85%.
Okay.
Volume.
Volume reduction.
Volume reduction.
Rate you meet.
Rate you meet, okay. So, and again, I'm not a stormwater management or designer.
You sound pretty good.
I'm, I'm working on it. I'm learning. So the conveyance system design you asked...
Dan doesn't get asked the same question.
That's right. So maybe you probably liked them from me.
Are you subject to the same three-minute limit?
No. I'm not, sorry.
Okay.
The conveyance design system had pipe velocities under the 2.5 feet per second minimum. Is, you were looking for smaller pipes then for conveyance? Or explain how that works.
So the site has a lot of areas which are relatively flat, just based on the nature of the design of the site. We're bringing in some fill to fill it up so that we can actually make the stormwater, the design work. So the flatness of the pipes and basically some of the limited drainage areas getting to that pipe results in a flow velocity in the pipe that is less than your design requirement. Now, the stormwater design's been designed to accommodate the 100-year storm, as have all the basins. Your ordinance just has a, it's not an outdated name, but it's just a, a requirement that the velocity in the pipe can't be less than for sediment buildup. We don't have that concern with the way the system's designed and what's getting to those pipes, so. We, we ask, I pretty much ask for that waiver every time I have an application.
Okay. But in that case then, so you're saying you're getting enough flow that you don't worry about sediment?
It's in the pipe. The velocity is based on for sedimentation in the pipes, and it's not a concern.
Part of my reason for asking that is on Friday, our parks and, our public works folks were in a neighborhood pulling out sediment from a stormwater inlet, so...
Yeah.
We're extra looking at that. And then reducing capture efficiency below 95% for curb inlets, what's that mean and why are you looking for a variation, a variance on that?
So again, this is a, I'll call it a little bit of an outdated ordinance, and it, our...
That's our old one.
It's an old, it's a, no, it's, it's still your ordinance, but it's an outdated one.
But the new one?
It's just an outdated principle for design. So in order to design a stormwater inlet along a curb line...
Right.
That would have a 95% capture efficiency for a subdivision like this, we would probably need to have inlets every 50 to 75 feet along the entire length.
Okay.
So the way that PADE, the way that PennDOT and ASHTO, which is the design body for PennDOT do, they have a requirement that the spread of flow down, down a road when it storms cannot exceed one-half of the travel lane. So if our travel lanes are 15 feet wide, these are 30-foot wide lanes, the flow along a curb line can't exceed seven and a half feet. That's basically the ASHTO requirement. To do a 95% capture rate, that means 95% of the flow during all the storm events can't bypass that inlet and go to the next inlet, which is, it's a nearly impossible design requirement to satisfy. So we're asking for us to satisfy the PennDOT and ASHTO design, which is one-half of a travel lane versus the 95% capture.
So is your suggestion that our new ordinance is too, is not viable, or is it...
This isn't even been, this isn't even a change in your new, your new ordinance only deals with volume...
Okay.
...water quality. This is really a stormwater conveyance design, design criteria, which is not something I think you guys even modified in your...
Right, okay. All right. And then for the setback in transition grading, you requested grading within five feet of property lines, which is typically requires 10 feet. Why? And what's the impact in terms of stormwater management there?
So that's, that's very simple. So we're doing grading right up...
Put the plan back up so you can highlight where it's going to happen.
Yeah, well, it's, it's pretty easy. It happens along the, almost the entire perimeter of the site because we're grading up to the right of way along the, along the bypass. We're installing trees, we're banning buffers.
Oh, okay, so that's along the trees, okay.
It's, again, it's a waiver that probably nearly every application requests in front of you. It's for transition grading, getting back to grade. It's not to grade over our property line, it's really just to plant the buffering and the trees and the, and the grading associated with this land development.
And then, okay. And then on the spillways, we have to pass 100-year event with a one-foot freeboard. And are we, we're able to do that? I don't believe, is that one of our...
Yeah, Justin, just to clarify, just, and I know you're looking through that, but the section 178 is what you're requesting relief from, which is the subdivision land development ordinance, correct?
Yes, correct.
So it's not the stormwater...
It's not the stormwater ordinance. I'm just going back to your line of questioning. It's, there, there's still stormwater requirements in the SADO ordinance...
Okay.
...that have not been updated, so it's not, it, the comment is not about the new stormwater management.
Okay, it's...
It has to do with...
That's good, thank you.
...requirements in the, in the SADO.
Thank you.
So, but the spillway, would you meet the 100-year event then?
The, the entire stormwater system, the basins, the pipes, everything is designed to accommodate the 100-year storm.
Okay.
So yes, correct.
And then the basin slopes are, are three to one, right? And we're normally four to one?
Correct.
Right. Why the reduced, or why the, pardon me, increase in, or steeper slope?
So three to one is typical for stormwater basin design, allows for more volume and having increased footprint. So when you do a stormwater design, you only take credit for the bottom contour area of that basin. So we do a steeper internal slope of the basins. Three to one is still mowable, it's still plantable.
Right.
You can do everything, and we, when we install the slope, they actually put an erosion control blanket down on it to stabilize it. So that's just, it's a typical stormwater design.
Would your intent be that those basins would be naturalized then in, in frequently mode?
No, so they are naturalized basins, they will have a seed mix planted, they're meant for bioinfiltration. And again, so in order for us to maximize our volume reduction credit on this site, we need to have the biggest basins possible. So that three to one slope, it doesn't sound like much, but along the entire area of that basin allows us to capture more and have more infiltration.
And did...
A more recharge.
Okay. And then on the, the DEP PCSM spreadsheet or pollution load calculations, have you done those?
Yes.
Okay.
You sound like a stormwater engineer.
Sorry.
Hey, you're good. So we meet, and I'll just, I'll jump to the chase there. So by meeting all the water quality requirements of PADEP, we satisfy all the pollutant load requirements as well.
Okay.
So that is already, the stormwater BNP's that we're proposing, the rain gardens along the entire stretch, and if you, if the plan was on the screen, you'll see the entirety of that basin area along the center part of our site are two massive rain gardens.
Okay.
Designed to be, you know, relatively shallow, and that large, so they promote both the water quality effects and the, we'll call it the recharge effects, even though it's a different form of recharge than typical infiltration, so...
Okay.
Yeah, the, the PABMP manual, we satisfy all nitri, all, all pollutant load requirements of that. And we already do have our MPDS permit for this application as well, so that means that PADEP also reviewed and confirmed that as well.
Okay. And then, I think I'm almost done here, just in terms of the questionings. You've got the, the area of land that is the open space area, who, does that, does that get an open space dedication, or where does that go?
So that open space area, now that it's not going to be farmland preservation, it's going to be true open space and reforest that will be maintained by the HOA?
It'll be held by the HOA. Just want to confirm that. Okay. And Mr. Murphy, just because I know you'd feel left out if I didn't ask you a question, the zoning for this is our one. You have a by right for all the stuff that you're talking about today.
We do.
Okay, so I didn't want to hurt your feelings by not asking a question, and I'll yield back the balance of my time to the chair.
No, you won't. You'll be back.
Happily, actually, I'll...
I'm sure.
Thank you for asking all these questions. So you, you have your, you have the NIPD's approval with ES, your erosion sediment control plan and your PCSM?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Does any of that have to be amended because of anything that we've done?
So...
Or you're good to go with what you have?
No. So with any revisions, obviously as we work through the revisions, we had our MPDS permit relatively early in this process. The board, planning commission has dictated some revisions, so we'll go back, but the revisions have been positive, so our permit's going to be just amended and it's, it's not going to be hard to get that amended.
The conservation district will appreciate the, the changes that we've requested.
You said that very well, yes.
I'm not going to, no pun intended, I'm not going to dig into the, the basins and stormwater too much. I, I think with the volume you said, are you taking credit for pipe volume for storage of the 100-year storm? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
When you say pipe volume, the conveyance?
The conveyance system.
The stormwater conveyance system can convey the 100-year storm, which is your requirement. The stormwater basins are designed to manage the 100-year storm.
Right.
So both, yes.
Okay. And I think you just said this, but the rain garden itself, it's going to be a couple of rain gardens with some woody vegetation in clusters, it looks like. of rain gardens with some woody vegetation in clusters, it looks like from the plan, coupled with the Ernst 180 seed mix based on the plan, which is a mix of native herbaceous vegetation for folks that watch, you know, things like milkweed and wild rice and stuff like that.
That's correct.
Which provide habitat cover. And you're going to, do you have a plan to, for those areas that are going to be herbaceous? Are, are those going to be mowed once a year or anything like that?
So, our PCSM, our post-construction stormwater management plan has a full operation and maintenance schedule that needs to be followed. That plan will be recorded. And the maintenance of those basins, yes, it's on a, it's on, I think, biannual basis that gets mowed and maintained.
And the HOA will enter into contract with some third party to do that?
Yes, they will.
Right. And they'll be told, don't mow this like my terrible short haircut tonight?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll admit it. Let's see. And then, getting back to, let's see, total number of trees, we talked about the 1,100 or so trees in the reforested area. When I look at the landscape plan, there's trees throughout, street trees, there's, I'll call them backyard border trees, there's the, I don't know that you have any trees in the rain garden, but you have woody veg in the, in the rain garden. Have you done a total count of number of trees?
I, I wish I did have that number, but it's hundreds of trees that are going to be planted as part of the land development, that's street trees.
On top of the 1,100.
On top of the 1,100. So, we did not, by doing the reforestation, I think it's a good point to make, we did not take credit for the reforestation to alleviate any of the land development concern, the land development requirements of this project. So, street trees, replacement trees, buffer trees, we kept them as is and then added on the 1,100 for the reforestation.
Okay. So, all, all that is positive in my, in my view. And that's going to be, I think supervisor Lewis may have asked this, I just want to double-check, is there going to be some sort of deed restriction, conservation easement, something on that reforested area to make sure that it doesn't get?
Yes.
Okay, what, what's your plan on that?
Well, Maureen will tell us, but my presumption is it'll be a conservation easement in that area, a recorded conservation easement for the reforested area.
That would be the intent, yes.
Good. And then, you know, when you, I've done a lot of these, when you plan, and I didn't look at all the sizes of the trees planned, but typically when you plan 1,100 trees over 10 acres, some of them are going to die. They're not all going to survive.
And that's.
What's, what's, what's the plan over the, say, five, first five years or so? How, can you walk me through how to, how we're going to maintain the trees and if trees do die, if there's need for replacements, there warranty on stuff? Long-term plan, once things do get 30, 40, 50 feet tall, when they fall down and go boom, you know, tree falls in the woods, how are you going to maintain that in the HOA?
So, the reforestation effort is different than a typical planting effort, and I think you may have alluded to it during the planning commission process. It's meant to mimic nature.
Yeah.
So, the way that they're designed, their ceiling, their saplings, their whips that get planted, the assumption is that some of them are going to die, and it is going to be like a survival of the fittest, and obviously it grows. On the, the floor of the, the ground around there, there's also going to be a seed mix that's planted around there too, which will promote this reforestation effort. But we will have our landscape architect develop some sort of maintenance schedule for this reforestation effort, but it's, it is clear that some of those trees are designed not to survive, and it's meant to be clustered and to promote that, to mimic nature. So, I think you, you brought up the, the bird carrying a seed sort of analogy, that's what this is meant to mimic, and we just, we give it a little helping hand.
A little, natural succession with a little kick in the.
Little help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, are you, is your landscape, I'll call you your landscape provider, providing any type of warranty on, on those particular plantings versus your street, and, or, and/or your street trees?
Well, the, as you know, as part of any land development project, you have to enter into an 18-month maintenance bond at the completion of your land development. So, once you get through the performance bond of active development, your 18 months of a maintenance bond, all the trees that are going to be planted are going to be part of that maintenance bond.
Okay.
So, after 18 months, but there will be, some of the trees are also part of our PCSM requirement, so they will also have to be maintained as part of our record plan requirements and PCSM requirements. So, I think there's a lot of duplicity there, and there's a lot of coverage to make sure that what's being proposed grows and stays healthy.
Okay. Sort of, probably put the cart before the horse on this one, but the, you didn't put it up there, but last, at the last planning commission, there was a lot of talk about a tree survey. It sounds like you had done one prior to that meeting, you just didn't have it available for that meeting, if, if memory serves. It's part of our package tonight, so we've seen that you've done the tree survey and labeled all the trees and the sizes, et cetera, et cetera. I think the, one of the, I forget, maybe it was a daughter, granddaughter of the, oh, yeah, I thought I recognized you, came and gave us a little history on the planting of the trees, so we got some understanding of when they were planted and what sizes they might be to date. So, it's, all that being said, we wanted to make sure that you did the tree survey, it showed everything that was out there, not just the stuff that you were, your arborist was calling dead, dying, diseased, et cetera, but it showed everything, and that's, that's been completed, as, as you mentioned, we have it in our thing. So, I just want to make sure folks are aware of that. What were the largest trees you found out there that were, that are living out there right now?
There's, I'll call it, there's three largest trees on the property were, it's going to be one second to go through. There was a 42-inch pin oak, is in decline from bacterial leaf squirts, is the one, that's number 37, if you're referencing the exhibit. There is a 42 silver maple that was in good health, and a 44-inch silver maple also in good health. So, those are the three largest trees on the property. And again, and I mean, I, I think we just ran through the numbers roughly, there's about 700 trees that are going to be planted as part of the land development effort in addition to the almost 1,200 trees that are planted as the reforestation. So, a total of 47 trees, about 30, 40% of which are in poor health or dead, diseased and dying, are going to be removed, but I think we are substantially reforesting and replanning the property based on that.
What, I'll ask, because of the two that are in good, the two silver maples that are seemingly in good shape, is there any ability to save either one of both of those?
There's not.
No.
Not with the grading and stormwater requirements, there's not.
Okay. That's unfortunate, obviously.
Yes.
Okay. So, we've, I think I've, we've covered the stormwater in my, my book, others may have more questions, covered the trees in my book, I think. And actually, what size trees are planted on the north side? I know there was a discussion about the, sort of, the back, I'll call it the backyard buffer of the north side farmland.
Right.
That the residents to the north were concerned about.
Right.
You've added more, can you describe what size they'll be planted at and what types of trees will be there?
Right. It's hard to tell on the rendered sketch, but Justin can talk about the detail of that.
Sure. Along the back buffer, all of the trees that are being planted, the evergreen trees are 67 feet in height to meet your ordinance requirement, the deciduous trees are three-inch caliper and a minimum of 14 foot in height when they're planted. So, all the trees being planted along the buffer meet your township requirements, and obviously will be, you know, required as part of the maintenance bond that they survive as well.
And those, the evergreens you're planting, are those ones that are relatively fast-growing, what are two per year, or?
The, there's a, a variety based on, and I think there's, there are some I can go through if I, I look at the list, but we could supplement, if you have an interest, I know you're talking like the green giant arbivideae, leland cypress, like the faster growing trees. If, if there's a desire that we supplement that buffer with some of that, we could do so.
I don't love, I don't love arbivideae for, for, for this purpose generally, I knew that, I know they grow fast. Cypress, a little more native, a little, little better, but generally speaking, actually, when you came up with the tree list, whether it's your street trees, your border trees or your reforestation trees, who, did you speak to the, I know there was some discussion about maybe coordinating with EAC or others, has that occurred? How did you come up with the list?
I think it's your ordinance.
Yeah, we've.
We're following your ordinance and the mix.
Well, even the reforestation plan?
No, no, we did not.
That's what I'm.
No, we used, our landscape architect is familiar with reforestation, we did not consult your EAC, but we're happy to share that plan with them after the fact, but we're comfortable with the amount of experience our landscape architect has, that this is the proper way to do it.
Yeah. I, I think it would be.
Dan, can I jump in there for a second? Just on that tree issue?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, no, no, the only thing I want to say is like, our streets are lined by other well-meaning developers with these evergreen trees that are not meant to be little soldiers standing in the road. They don't last that way, they don't grow that way, they, that's why, they all look a little bit bruised and are suddenly dying out. So, we appreciate that your landscape architect is the best, but we would more appreciate it if you'd work with the people who live here so that we can get something that really.
And, and just for, the EAC did review our landscape plan.
No, I understand that.
They just have not reviewed.
I have so many thoughts on trees, you're going to be, and I've got seven months to share them, so.
I did not, the landscape, the EAC did not have any comments on our landscaping, which was nice.
I appreciate that, but we're going to have lots of comments.
Got it.
Thank you. Sorry, Dan.
No, that's fine. And I, before you do actually plant anything with the reforestation plan, I'd like the EAC to run through it and provide comment, I, I may jump in there too with them.
It's fine.
Just so we're all on the same page. All right. The other, I, I know you touched on the right-out only and, and supervisor Lewis asked about the cart, cartway width and all that stuff. Some of the meetings, there was discussion about whether or not there was going to be any traffic calming and which locations, either in the development or in the existing development, I just want you to touch upon what the plan is from a traffic perspective so it's clear to everybody. I don't think there's going to be traffic coming north, but I just want you to explain what you're doing so everyone's clear on it, to try and avoid misunderstandings.
Sure. And I think there was a resident, or I'll say a proponent of all the residents in the neighboring community that showed up last time, saying that they do not want any modifications done to the existing community. So, just for clarity here, we are not proposing anything in the existing community to the north of us, so that's going to stay as is. The township traffic engineer also did a speed study of that neighborhood and found that there was no concerns with speeding as well, obviously all within the, the tolerances expected. In our neighborhood, as I already mentioned, the, at the entrance of Surrey Lane, there's going to be the center median, the boulevard entrance, which is going to have a traffic calming effect coming in, and that's, that's really the extent of it. We eliminated the cut-through by eliminating that right-out or any connection to the bypass, which I think was the largest concern of all the residents, to have that cut-through traffic, which would be your, you know, your typical speeder going in and out.
Okay. Any other traffic changes you've made of any type?
We have not.
Okay. Any sidewalks in here?
Sidewalks on both sides.
Sidewalks, okay, so you have connections?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to see here. I'll reserve my right to ask more questions, but I'll, I'll pass it down to the board. Anyone immediately, or should I just walk down?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions regarding the existing structure that was there, and you guys might have touched base with this, but I don't know if this audience has heard it. So, there's an existing 1790 house on the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, in prior developments in Lower Makefield Township, for example, Scammell's Corner, Reserve at Yardley, both of those developments were able to rehab those existing 1790s, or older homes that were part of that tract prior to subdivision. More recently, Prickup Reserve took an antique barn and did it up. So, I'm just wondering if you guys ever considered that as part of your, your development?
There's no intention to preserve anything on that.
Okay. Thank you. That was the only question I had.
Along those lines, was there a cultural resources survey done of, of the property?
Yes.
Can you describe the outcome of that? Throw it.
There's no.
We, we did the above ground in the archaeological study with PHMC, they determined no further findings or anything historical to the site, so they cleared us, they cleared us with a clearance letter.
All right. So, they just, so it's, so it's, you said clearance a couple times, so, so it's clear to everybody, it was not deemed eligible for listing on the national register?
That's correct.
Okay, but a full survey had been done?
It happened.
Okay.
Would there be a chance to get our historical committee people in there, just to take a look-see? I know that's something of interest to them, I don't know if that's happened already.
Could, yeah, so as part of the, let me back up before you answer, as part of the process, and, oh, good, Jim's coming in.
Here comes Jim.
There should be a ton of photos and documentation on the property as part of that process, but, and let's hear what Jim has to say.
Yeah, the applicant did have someone go out and document the property, but the historical commission has expressed an interest in going in to the house after it's vacated, before it's demolished, to sort of photo-document it for their own purposes, just to, you know, see how things were put together way back when.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Would you be amenable to that?
No.
And, and you mean for the purposes of the historic commission? It's not like, they have, their only purpose is to preserve and document history, it's not like they have some, the way you said it, it sounded like a little weird, for their own purposes.
Yeah, I often do that.
Nothing, nothing nefarious going on there, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I, can I, are you done?
One more.
Yes.
About that topic, is there any, if they find anything that they would?
Yes.
Consider unique or whatever, could they work with you to take possession possibly?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks. Trees, trees, lots of trees. So, I think it's the north, the part of the, the top of the picture that would be over there. You're going to put a buffer between your land on your property, between farmland. I know farmland has had some trouble in the past with some of those trees because, you know, farmers don't really like shade. So, you're in contact with them to make sure that, you know, they're as agreeable to you as they are to them?
Yes. So, that's the short answer, and that's, yes, we have.
Are you saying I'm wordy?
No, I'm, we've been through this at, at nauseam with the, the battle between farmland and, and open space and plantings, but we are planting them on our property and directly adjacent to our property line is actually a farm access road for about 20-some feet, so the shade from the trees will, we're comfortable that it'll work.
Thank you, that's great. Go ahead, Jim.
Although I will point out that we shouldn't plant trees that grow to be 80 feet tall there, they should be more smaller species, maybe flowering-type trees that maybe grow to 20, 30, 40 feet.
Currently very into dogwoods.
Not shade out the farmland.
That's fine.
Thank you. The little island that's right at the beginning of the development, is that just cement, or is that?
We were proposing that to be a planted island.
And I love that. And that'll be deeded to the HOA, and they'll be obligated to maintain that?
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you. You guys had a lot of conversation about the basin and rain gardens. That kind of goes over my head, so. The Delaware River Troll Bridge, I like to call them the Troll Bridge. They did a beautiful naturalized basin on River Road and Tailsville. I appreciate that yours is not that deep, but how much can we expect to see in that basin in terms of trees? Because like, when you say little rain gardens, I'm imagining, you know, breakfast for the deer, and they won't really survive.
No, so there's gonna be, it's gonna be a mix. And it's actually a design mix that's required as part of this BMP, this Best Management Practice of Stormwater. The majority of it's gonna be what's known as an earned-seed mix, that's gonna be just a flowering, meant to be a stormwater basin, so fill it with water and draw down. And there are gonna be trees planted sporadically through that, that'll give it that naturalized look as it grows in. So it's probably gonna be very similar to the one that you, to the Troll Bridge, but in a, I guess, a smaller residential scale.
Maybe to help with that.
Thank you.
As part of having a PCSM plan approved, you have to enter into an agreement to maintain those trees over time?
Yes.
It's not like the reforestation area where stuff's gonna die and they can let it die. This one, they have to maintain over time. In addition, there's gonna be some trees, some shrubs, it looks like, I know they look like little hectagons or octagons or something in there, but there'll be clusters of trees, it looks like. The earned-seed, McErnch is the big seed company, will grow up as an understory around that and provide habitat and stormwater management generally.
That's correct.
Not to promote your design, but that's generally what you're looking to do, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Right.
And when, and when these homes are being sold, right, because I, not any development that the DeLucas have been involved with, but other developments, sometimes the homeowners don't appreciate their HOA and their obligation under the HOA. So there'll be...
Well documented.
Well documented, plenty of legalese that will say to these people, hey, if you think, you know, as soon as we leave, you can mow all that, no, you can't.
Well, and one step further, the basins are not on their property, they're off their property on an open-space lot.
Mm-hmm.
Not open space, but I'll call it just a basin lot. And the basins are gonna be entirely fenced in, too. So they will not have the ability to go in and mow that. That'll be handled by the HOA and handled by a private contractor that mows the rest of the commons.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you too, Dan.
You mentioned the fence, what kind of fence are you putting in?
This is a post-emrail fence that surrounds the basin with wire mesh.
And that'll be up to the HOA to maintain that as well?
Yes.
Supervisor Ross, do you have any questions?
Everybody asked every question I had.
Dan, I do know Jim has a couple just sort of clarifying questions, once the board is done.
Absolutely. Please do so.
Good evening. I did have a few questions. I guess you've confirmed the open space will be owned and maintained by the HOA. The rain gardens, detention basin facilities will be owned by the HOA. Are the roads going to be private by the HOA?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know there was a little concern expressed about the, sort of the dead-end piece on the right side of the screen, or on the east side, about having a cul-de-sac there if it was publicly owned.
No. The intent is the roads will be maintained by the HOA.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can you describe in a little more detail what it's gonna look like at the, sort of the dead-end, where the emergency access is gonna be with the ball, just so everyone's clear, how access will occur, who can access it, and when and how?
Sure. It's actually gonna be similar to the dead-end now on Surrey Lane, if everyone's familiar with that. That just has a, kind of a gate up on it that's basically been overgrown at times. So this is gonna be just the, an end of pavement right there, and then this is gonna look like a continuation of a driveway coming off of the end of the street. So almost as if a driveway extends off of that. And about 15, 10, 15 feet past the end of the street will be a chain and bollard that stretches across the entire length. So cars will not be, you know, enticed to drive in there, because they will obviously get stuck and have to back out. But it'll look like just basically a dead-end street with a driveway that extends off of it that connects into Patterson Lane. So what you don't see here, just based on the color of the plan, is Patterson Lane is actually right here. So you're gonna, you're gonna see the roadbed of Patterson Lane heading up to the Dill Plain property at the top.
So Justin, when, I asked you yesterday about what those two un-lotted areas on either side of that dead-end street quote-unquote are. Just explain for the board what that is.
So this, these two lots are actually open space area. And that was intentionally done so that, as, and Jim, if you could pan down to the bottom, so if, for farmland use, if they still wanna maintain access to the active farm to the north, they could take access through Patterson Lane, drive down Patterson Lane, cut across this open space to get to that back area as well, too. So that's intentionally left as open space to provide a little buffer between a private residence property line and the existing roadbed of Patterson Lane.
So a few follow-up questions related to both those items. So can you describe, then, two different, take, go whichever one you wanna do first. One, describe exactly how the Dill Plains will, their access will be maintained, how they can access their home. Because I know there's been, there was talk about a couple different opportunities for access for them. And then, two, if you can also describe how farmland is going to access, the farmland preservation from different directions, please.
Sure. Starting with the Dill Plain access. This exhibit was done, it's the Dill Plain Access exhibit. The easy answer is exactly as it is today. So the yellow is exactly how Patterson Lane exists today and how they maintain access to their property. There's gonna be no change as part of this development. The road is going to be left in its existing condition. Access off of the bypass is gonna be exactly the same. So they're gonna be able to access their property exactly as they do today.
Do they have alternative means of access based off of this, or is that, those bollards and chains do not allow them to cut through that neighbor, or go to their neighborhood?
Based on this design, the chain and bollard is gonna be left there for emergency use only, and their access is gonna be limited to the bypass. Now, if there's an interest for them to come through the neighborhood, we can look at a different option than the chain and bollard that they may have access to. But at this time, based on the conversations of the Planning Commission and their concerns, we just wanna make the point that their access is exactly as it is today. No change.
Okay. And if they're here tonight and have comments or questions about that, that'll be a topic of discussion, I assume?
Correct.
Okay.
Second, the farmland preservation, there's two points of access. The easiest one to discuss is there's an existing farm here between Surrey Lane and our property. There's actually a 50-foot piece of land that exists, it's township-owned. On this side, there's farmland preservation owned on the right side. This is a township right-of-way, which was designed for future access for exactly this use. The, if you see here, we put a curb cut, and I'll show you on both screens, on the off-arm property, in the township property, in the farmland preservation property, the road is going to be left as, without curb on both sides, so that farmland vehicles can traverse the extension of Surrey Lane to get to the other active farm on the other side. And that was through many discussions with farmland preservation to keep that open. And again, that's off of our property, that's township property and farmland preservation property, so we are just accommodating their request.
Is that a current access point, or, so they currently drive farm equipment across that 50-foot wide, or whatever, wide?
Yep. So if you see here, and Jim's following it with his cursor, there's actually a, you can see two tire track marks on both sides. It's a gravel access road that runs along the back of the right farm property along the north, and they go right through that township access piece.
Do we anticipate any changes to the volume of farmland traffic getting through there?
Not to my knowledge.
I'm just thinking if there should be some type of vegetated buffer, or some type of buffer between the homes there at the end of Surrey Lane and that access to...
As far as I'm, as far as I know through conversations with them, they're just maintaining what they do today. That's all, that was his only request, just to keep it open, and so he can keep using it as he does today.
Okay.
Second point of access would be through Patterson Road. So they would have access through Patterson Road, to come up the roadbed of Patterson Road and access the farm, similar to what they do today. There's actually a gravel path that extends the Patterson Lane, so they would just come up off of the bypass and then into the back area as well. So two points of access to maintain access to both active preserved farms.
Okay. I'll be curious to hear if any of the residents have any...
Yeah, Justin, I know Jim has a question I think he wants to pose relative to the one access point on, at the existing terminus of Surrey.
Yeah. One thing we did notice on the plan, of course, it's a little late, but we just noticed that at the end of the proposed roadway, there's kind of not an easy way for someone to turn around there, or if they're dumping snow, to plow it and sort of not block the emergency access. So we're thinking a little bit of a hammerhead there, where someone could come in, push the snow off, back up, and then go back out. And also at the, where Surrey Lane comes in, you kind of have it on there right now, where you have a little bit of a bump out, and maybe accentuate that slightly, so that coming up here, a truck can basically turn around, because we have our vehicles versus the private ones.
No. We can accommodate both of those.
Yeah. Where, if we do have a big snowstorm in this area, since they're private roads, where are they gonna, where are they gonna put the snow when they're plowing?
So the snow gets pushed off of the roads at the, at the end of each area. There's, we don't have, no storage has been shown on the plans. They can actually, they can be added if necessary, but there's enough area to be pushing the snow off of the road onto the front yards, is typical in neighborhoods.
Okay. What I don't want them to do is to be pushing snow that may have salt in it onto our ag field somehow. That would negatively impact that.
Yeah. I don't think they could, we'll make a point to not do that.
Yeah, that's a concern. Any other board comments or questions? Any staff comments or questions?
I believe we've addressed those at this point, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that, I know we have a lot of folks in the room tonight. I'll ask, I'll open it up to public comment on the plans. As I think you're all aware, please, just like public comment, please state your name, whether or not you're a Lower Makefield resident, and please try and keep your comments to about three minutes. Again, if, to try and avoid repeat comments. We'll take note of the comments, obviously, but if someone's already made your comment, please try not to repeat. With that, take it away, sir.
Dan Seekins, I live at 1209 Bridal Estates Drive, one of the adjacent properties. So I had two clarifying quick questions, I think. One is, since the Planning Commission have added a row of trees in the north side, are those gonna be discretionary in terms of the new owners of the property? Or will the HOA sort of enforce that they have to replace them? If they die, they can't cut them down and put a patio there. Will they be able to make that decision, or not? Or will they be restricted somehow?
So they, they will be on an approved land development plan that gets recorded, so they will be required to be installed?
Okay. And the second thing is the new, the other new change is the accommodation for the farm equipment seems to go right across your only entrance to your development now. Has the traffic engineer looked to see if that's a safety hazard of having farm equipment crossing the entrance and exiting?
He has, and we don't own that property, so we are required to maintain farm access. The volume of farm traffic going in and out of there is very infrequent, so he is, he's...
Is there any, like, warning, or, I mean, what prevents a collision? There's no stop sign, there's no...
We, I mean, I get your point, but I think that the volume of traffic is infrequent, so we'll work with him to make sure he's satisfied with that crossing.
Is, maybe I can ask, is this something where we put a tractor-crossing sign or something like that?
You could. Yeah, that's...
I'm not a traffic engineer, nor do I play one on TV, like other folks may say, but I get your point, right?
So do I, yeah.
I have one.
Yeah.
Put a tractor sign up.
I'm not gonna make the call, I'm not the traffic engineer, but I get your point. It's, especially when folks are coming in a long straight line, or, you know, they're going a little quick, you wanna make sure they see that, if there's difficulty seeing around anything, you wanna make sure they see the tractor.
No, it's a good point.
Appreciate it. And the curb cuts, are they, tractors can be heavy, are they reinforced anything that'll keep them from breaking down? Because that part, that little, since that's a township-owned 50-foot-wide thing there, that means the township is responsible for those road cuts, or the HOA?
That would, to be determined. I think it would be township at that point, if it's off our property. We could discuss that as part of the, in any case, it'll be heavy-duty pavement.
Yeah.
There'll be heavy-duty pavement poured through there to accommodate the farm traffic. So that would...
All right. So we need to figure out who owned that little square road there, to make sure that it's clear.
It is a, that square, that road exists within township right-of-way.
Okay, so... Okay, so we'll always own it? So our township folks should look into anything we might need at the, like, whether it's concrete or anything reinforced at those road cuts, because we'd have to maintain it. I know Dave, if our traffic engineers have looked at that yet. And if there's anything that we'd ask them to do upfront, to start it, and then we maintain it long-term?
Yeah, we can absolutely make sure that we're making note of that and having that conversation.
And I guess from a process perspective, do we have to put any conditions on our motion for that, or is that just a conversation that'll get worked out?
Restrictions as to...
Not a restriction, but like...
You're saying make it a condition of approval, if, to the extent that there's gonna be a motion? Again, I don't...
The design of those road cuts that they're proposing to allow for access, is that something that we would ask them when they're constructing it to be a certain type, or not?
Yes. We could make that a part of the approval.
Okay. All right. Any additional public comment?
Yes.
All right. Take Booching to do?
Alex Davidoff, 1233 Bridal Estates Drive, resident township. Just wanted to start off by saying thanks to Board of Supervisors, as well as Jim Majewski, and I don't know if, Dan is here tonight?
McLune?
Dan McLune is not here, thank him as well. And also thanks to the DeLucas and Janati and Ed Murphy. They actually, all, I think all of you have actually listened to a great deal of our concerns, and we see that in the final results of this plan. I think, Dan just asked about the trees on the north side of the property. They will not have discretion to cut them down as part of the HOA?
It's, no.
They will not? Okay. I would be open to giving them some degree of discretion if they wanted to cut some of them down, but not all, not all.
That's a tough one to, tough one to balance and manage.
Okay, it's fine.
Appreciate it, though.
No, we...
Your kind neighbor.
It, you know, something you'd talk about that with them, if they, if it was really a nuisance or bother of some sort, if they wanted to see the farmland. But generally, we want, I'm gonna be installing more of a buffer on my property, so if I can do it, I'm glad that they can do it as well. It's gonna cost me a lot of money. Confirmation on construction work, a large number of residents have asked me about this. I know the township ordinance is 7:00 AM to dusk on weekdays, 8:00 AM to dusk on weekends and holidays. The concern is about the work, but also, too, is the noise is the really big concern for us. I know that Jim had stated to me that there's no hard rock and there's not gonna be any drilling. I don't know if anybody can confirm that, or, I mean, the big thing is the noise. We, if there's a lot of noise, we're, especially on weekends and holidays, when, you know, we have people over, we'll be calling Lower Makefield Police Department all the time.
Yeah. So maybe I can ask this. Can you go over or review your anticipated construction schedule, as well as how your truck traffic is gonna enter and exit the property?
So start, I'll start with truck traffic. All construction traffic is going to go through the Patterson Road entrance off of the bypass. Our Penn.HOP permit specifically requires that, and that is the permit we just got last week. So all construction vehicles will go through there, they will not be routed through, and the construction, the entrance from Surrey Lane will not be opened until construction is at a place where it's...
So if you see any construction vehicles coming down Surrey Lane...
Not be open until the first model was open for business.
It did previously clarify that, and you asked me not to repeat it.
No, 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 no.
If we see, if we see construction, if we see construction vehicles, we will lay down some spike strips, just, just in the interest of safety.
He's moving up from Claymore, and so, I mean...
In the interest of safety.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
And the construction schedule is what the township schedule allows. I think we've been asked whether or not we would not work on Saturdays and Sundays. The answer is no, we will work when we're allowed to work, we intend to do that. But we will comply timing and all the other requirements that the township has for when you're allowed to start, things like that.
And access points are important, so I just wanna make sure you're...
Yeah, they went over access points before. We just, the big concern is noise, more than anything. Because there, the township does have ordinances on noise, and we intend to make sure they're enforced.
Yeah, and we do enforce them.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. How long do you think the construction will take? How many months or weeks?
Two to three years, hopefully closer to two years, once we break ground.
Is that just civil, or is that the buildings as well?
Uh, no, building as well.
Okay.
Okay. One other question on the grading of homes. I don't know if Jim can pull up the plan again one more time. One thing you don't see on the plan, if you can zoom out to the whole broader plan here, is that this land kind of slopes down to the roadway and then up. I don't know if that's something that you're aware of or not. Is there gonna be fill placed here to kind of bring it level to the rest of the lot line?
The, so the site's been designed to obviously work with existing topography, so bringing in fill is obviously expensive, you don't wanna do that. Stormwater basins are placed at the natural low point, so the existing topography's gonna remain. Will there be fill? There will be. Some fill brought into the site just to make the stormwater and general design work, yes. But we're not, just to jump to your, probably your next point, all natural drainage patterns are gonna be remained, all stormwater's gonna be going in the same location that's going, nothing's gonna be directed back towards your houses. All stormwater's gonna flow towards the basins, and then actually towards Lindenhurst through a defined swell.
Actually, I think you addressed the water concerns just fine.
Okay.
I was more concerned about the noise from the roadway coming to your homes and subsequently to mine.
Okay.
This is my home right here, that's why I'm so concerned here.
Which one is it?
This one, right here. I know, I think they've already covered trees in the retention basin, that's another thing that they wanted, that we wanted to go over. The entrance to Bridal Estates, so I had brought this up in the previous meeting. I didn't know if there was anything that the developer could do to help us clean it up. We had been maintaining collections and it to the tune of a few thousand dollars every few years to clean that up on our own, because we don't have an HOA, and we're not required to.
So what do you mean by clean it up? What's the current...
Just make it look nice. We're all gonna be sharing the same entrance, and now there's gonna be 150% traffic increase going along the same roadway. So I think it's a, I think it's more, it's more of a benefit for them, because it's gonna be more traffic for them, so just something to consider.
No.
And I guess the last thing is, I know that I had made the concerns of the residents, mostly of the residents along Bridal Estates, among safety and traffic. If all 47, I mean, I think they've been heard, and I think you guys are all listening to our concerns. Pretty simple. I told you I have a three-year-old and another one on the way due in July. Anything happens to any of the residents in terms of, like, harm from traffic, we're just gonna hold the township and the developers liable.
We're gonna try.
Plain and simple.
You try.
We will, and we will succeed.
Cool. Thanks for your comments. Three minutes is up.
I appreciate it, and I'm not trying to be flak. I mean, you know, I guess maybe I feel a little free tonight, but it's really difficult to have neighbors tell us that we're gonna be responsible if a tragedy happens. It's just, it's just not how I was raised.
I understand that, but you are approving these homes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
By right.
Thank you, James.
By right. Yeah, I understand that.
Same way Bridal Estates was built, by right.
By right, I understand.
The house you live in right now.
The house I live in right now, I understand that.
Okay.
And we all share, and we all drive nice and slow. And we all share and we all drive nice and slow along those roads. And that's what the residents have communicated to me. They said that there's going to be a massive increase in the traffic. My kid was riding his, three-year-old was riding his tricycle on that road. And that's what I was asked to communicate.
Cool.
I, I'm done, thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Robert Piper, 1209 Bridal Estates Drive. I first wanted to mention that I'm strongly opposed to Patterson Lane becoming privatized from 332 all the way up to the elderly woman's home at the other end. As she expressed at the Planning Commission meeting, she was very concerned about clearance of snow and the cost of her from the homeowners association. That is yet unknown whether they're going to charge her for clearing snow on her access to her house at the end of Patterson Lane. I think you're creating more headaches and more unknowns if you allow privatization of Patterson Lane from 332 to the other end where that elderly woman is desperately hoping that it remains public and not a headache to try and get her snow cleared. So, she's got access out of her home. Moving on to the next issue. With safety and we have major sections as, as Alex mentioned about the safety. As you know, section 178.38 of the ordinances requires safety to be addressed when there is a connection to an existing neighborhood. Alex pointed out, four, five-year-old children are riding their bicycles in our neighborhood on Bridal Estates Drive. All it takes is one of these 100 to 200 more vehicle drivers, just one of them to be distracted and one of those children is hit while driving their bike on that road. Just think of that, think if that were one of your children. This could cause serious injury or death. We've got, I've seen numerous little children riding their bicycles on Bridal Estates Drive. My immediate neighbor has two small sons that ride their bicycles on Bridal Estates Drive on a regular basis and their friends come to visit them on their bicycles also coming down Bridal Estates Drive. I'm telling you, you don't want this tragedy, not for anybody's children, not for your own. Just imagine the situation. Now, we've got in addition to the young children riding their bicycles, we've now got cars, other vehicles owned by family or friends, possibly contractors parked on the curb of Bridal Estates Drive. So, now they are getting in and out of those vehicles on the street. So, when you add 100 to 200 vehicles per day coming through that Bridal Estates Drive and you've got people coming in and out of those driver's side doors to go visit their relatives, their friends, perhaps their customers as landscape providers. That's another safety risk of those people opening their doors to get in and out of those vehicles. A third issue, the joggers that jog down Bridal Estates Drive on a regular basis. We have baby strollers on the sidewalks. We've got dog walkers on the sidewalks. And so, the joggers prefer jogging on Bridal Estates Drive. So, again, imagine one of those 100 to 200 additional vehicles, one driver can be distracted and suddenly one of those people getting out or in of those vehicles on the curb is hit, Lord forbid seriously injured or killed. And one of those joggers out for an afternoon jog, you get one distracted driver of one of those 100 to 200 drivers, they're looking down at their next stop. I mean, if it's a delivery vehicle, Bluetooth cellphone call and they're emotionally distracted and they run into a jogger, they run into a young child on a bicycle. Just yesterday, I saw two young children, two young sons, two young boys running across the street. Luckily, the cars slowed down. They were off their bicycles, they thought it was safe to cross the street, being off their bicycles, but cars almost hit them. So, this could happen any day. So, now from the Bridal Estates, safety concerns and safety threats, we move on to Corey Road. Some people say, where's Corey Road? What's Corey Road about? What does it have to do with this? Corey Road has the entrance to Bridal Estates Drive on it. And if you come out of Bridal Estates and make a left, you're going to head up the hill to Cemetery Ridge. And all along that area during certain seasons of the year, you've got massive amounts of deer. On Lindenhurst, right around the corner, my spouse and I had our car slammed into the side of it by a massive deer. Cost thousands of dollars of damage. Luckily, we were not seriously injured or killed. We've had numerous near misses on Corey Road. So, the, the issue is far worse on Corey Road. And you've got the issue of going up the hill toward the Cemetery Ridge and if you've got bicycle riders, which I see on a regular basis, going up Corey Road to Cemetery Ridge, you have to veer into oncoming traffic to get around the bicycle rider. The big problem is you can't see around the small family cemetery to see the oncoming traffic. So, this is another big accident waiting to happen and a serious accident. Just as bad, if you're coming from the Lindenhurst end toward Bridal Estates, they can't see people coming up the ridge toward the family cemetery. Literally, Corey Road, if you've not been on Corey Road, literally the street has to go around a very small family cemetery and literally the street is within feet of the cemetery. So, have you all been on that road and experienced that small cemetery? Nobody has?
We, we, we all have, we.
You all have?
Yeah, and we all have had small children riding their bikes in neighborhoods. I still do, I'm a runner, I run through neighborhoods all the time.
Do you guys have sidewalks in your neighborhood?
We don't have sidewalks in my neighborhood.
Does Bridal Estates have sidewalks, does anybody now?
It does have sidewalks, but again, you're not going to have.
We put those.
People on, in their family vehicles parking on the curb, pulling up onto a sidewalk so that they can exit or enter the vehicle on a sidewalk when it's a vehicle and it needs to be on the curb. They don't want to block the family vehicles that are on the family driveway. So, if you've been on Bridal Estates Drive on a regular basis, you will see cars parked on the curb on both sides of Bridal Estates Drive. Now, imagine you've got those cars and other trucks, delivery trucks parked on the curb on both sides. You've got young children riding their bicycles darting around these vehicles on the curb. And now you're asking us to accept 100 to 200 more vehicles through Surrey Lane. How can anybody consider that safe? Especially with these small children on their bicycles in this quiet neighborhood. So, now we move on, as I mentioned before.
Sir, you're well over the allotted three minutes that we've been giving everyone. So, I, I would ask you to please, you've said the same comments over and over again. We appreciate the safety, we've, we've looked at that.
My husband used up his three minutes.
He already spoke, yes.
Okay. Once again, I want to finish by saying that the, the ordinances speak to preserving the natural features of the site. This includes numerous healthy trees on the site. And we finally got an arborist to disclose numerous healthy trees on the site. Unfortunately, I just got this information two days ago. Does the township consider that reasonable notice? I don't have the time to go out in two days and get a five-hour evaluation of trees by an arborist in two days. What does this panel consider legitimate, reasonable consideration to the public for this kind of information I just got this weekend?
So, that's driven by, I'll ask our solicitor to respond because that's actually driven by state law. So, about public notice.
Yeah, and my understanding was that this was delivered to the township on Friday morning and made available at that time.
It was not, I received it Saturday, it was posted Saturday. So, it's two business days prior, I'm sorry?
I don't believe the township posts things on Saturday, I, I don't know.
I received the information from Jim Majewski.
Well, so there's a difference between getting an email from Mr. Majewski versus something posted in a public forum.
I understand, but the letter was dated the 17th.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line, I guess, Maureen, there are no, there is no notice provision that requires the distribution of information to adjacent property owners as it relates to an application.
There is none other than general.
The notification on the website.
There is.
As it, as it relates to the agenda?
As it relates to every single item, including this.
Again, there's no, there, there is no statutory requirement to distribute information to individual property owners adjacent to.
On the same day, on the same day, I could get an update from an arborist noting there are actually healthy trees on the site as opposed to the former arborist letter saying, all these are unhealthy trees and not mentioning a single healthy tree on the site. I could get that within the same day of the meeting and that's considered reasonable notice. I object to that.
There, there is no statutory requirement that dictates what notice is. It, it's made available, it's ma, and it's made available to you. And consequently, and I guess secondarily, these trees are on private property. So, the fact that you would like to have an arborist look at these trees, you don't have the right to do so because they're on private property.
This was the Isaac Kessler, the engineer for the township requested this several months ago. This was not my idea.
No, but you just stated that you did not have the time to hire an arborist or to look at these trees that were reported in.
In two business days to review the, to review all the trees, probably five hours on the site and then submit a, a rebuttal to this arborist whose original letter mentioned no healthy trees.
Again, there, there is no requirement to provide this information to you. There's no statutorily, statutory requirement.
Even on the, on the website?
None, and it was posted on Saturday, which meant that there were forty.
Two business days.
Three, three, three business days.
Yeah, the requirement, the requirement is to post an agenda 24 hours prior to the commit, prior to a meeting, so.
And that includes every single piece of information.
There is no requirement to post every piece of information. There is no statutory requirement to provide that information to you. You can make a request to it and we've provided it as a courtesy, but there is no.
There's no statutory requirement.
There is no statutory.
Certain number of weeks.
No.
Prior to a hearing.
So, there are a lot of townships across the Commonwealth that don't post anything that's, they post the agendas, they don't post any of the packages, so you don't get to see anything at all until the meeting.
You show up at the agenda?
The other town, a lot of other townships do, I would never want to do.
Very progressive.
It, it's ridiculous, I, I, trust me, I agree with you on that. And relative to the prior arborist report, I agree with you on that too. And I made mention of that, that's why we, excuse me, asked strongly to have the full-blown tree survey provided as well as, you know, a, a report on that. So, that's why we have it. Would, do we like to see it as soon as possible? Yes, I agree wholeheartedly. Would I like to see one of the, of the larger trees? There are three larger trees in the 42-inch range, I believe. One of which is not doing well and two seem to be. The, the pin oak is not, which doesn't surprise me, pin oaks are not great after they get to a certain size. Silver maple's are seemingly doing well. It would be personally nice to see one or, one or two of those safe, given the size and what it could, what it could mean.
And it would be consistent with the ordinance to preserve natural features of the site.
So, that the, it, it's not black, it's not hard and fast that they have to preserve every natural feature on the site, unfortunately. I don't disagree with you there. But they do have the ability to mitigate for impacts to those natural resources and in this case, they're planting close to 2,000 trees of various types and sizes which will promote some, hopefully some really nice natural forested habitat in certain areas and some really nice noise and visual buffers for your neighborhood to the, to the bypass. I, I'm hopeful, that's why we were pushing for the reforestation in addition to some of the landscaping on the north side there. Again, a 42-inch tree is a nice tree, it would be nice to keep if we could. I understand the back and forth here. But relative to the studies that were done, they have been provided as requested. We've had a few days to look at them. It's always nice to have more time, I understand. But we, we have everything, we're asking them questions about everything to make sure, not, not to, not to test them on stuff, but just to make sure we understand the whole process and understand what's going to be kept, what's going to be changed, what's been mitigated, what they've added since the planning commission meetings and there's been a fair amount and what their process is going to be, so that's.
In section 185-2, A through H, it talks about how the Board of Supervisors strongly supports the trees in the township. And it gives, A through H, all the benefits of the trees, especially the large trees.
I'm very familiar.
I would strongly, as I leave, I would strongly encourage everyone to review those and see the amazing benefits that trees provide, especially the large trees to the township.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Any other public comment? All right. Reminder to please state your name whether or not you're a resident.
Mike Lederer, 1225 Bridal Estates Drive. I will keep it brief, thank you everybody for your time. My neighbor Alex touched on the majority of points that I would like to raise and I want to be respectful of not repeating comments that I've previously addressed. I did just have one clarifying question. I live two houses down from Alex, I also am facing out to the north end of, of, of the development. I've been at the last two planning commission meetings as well as tonight. Combined, we're probably at around seven and a half, eight hours of public comment and feedback regarding this particular plan. And in the, in the first planning commission meeting that I attended, one of the previous proposals had suggested the potential for the entryway to be at the four-way intersection of Stony Hill Road and the bypass. That was denied by PennDOT. I believe it was a stern letter harshly worded by PennDOT saying that they were not interested in that solution. The residents of the community are now at nearly eight hours of stern feedback and harsh comments around our opinions on the plan. And I'm just curious from the initial planning committee meeting until today, if that decision by PennDOT was ever revisited for consideration at that four-way intersection as the primary entrance with no connection to Surrey Lane?
It was revisited multiple times over the last year and a half or two years.
Okay, thank you very much, no further questions.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone online or on the phone?
No one online.
Okay. So, that we have a motion, second, we've, we've had, covered a lot of topics. Are there any items that we'd want to consider amending the motion to consider a specific condition?
I, I think you had mentioned something about making the cut-through.
Yes.
From, on the township land so that the tractors would be able to get across, but that it would be done in a re, appropriately reinforced manner.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
And I will accept that because.
Thank you.
With, with the final design TBD based on conversations between the developer and, and township, is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're talking about those curb cuts, right?
Yes.
I think there was one other mention from Jim and Derek regarding the.
What I had written down as potential additional conditions was the one you just said. Two, request to adjust the north-side buffer plantings to not make them as tall as your ordinance would require. So, it was to avoid shade on the farmland property.
I think it's just think Dogwoods fill, Mr. Murphy, yeah.
And we'll work with EAC or whoever to adjust that schedule that we were following. Three, make sure there's a note on the plans that said the private road.
Three, make sure there's a note on the plans that said the private road or the roads, the open space and the stormwater management area are all private, not to be dedicated, be maintained by the HOA, and establish snow easements at the dead-end locations to avoid pushing snow elsewhere and to add a tractor sign at the Surry Road entrance.
Okay. Is that the total of five?
And I, maybe, I'm not sure if this needs to be conditioned, but to coordinate with the EAC relative to the specific.
Reforestation.
Reforestation.
Right.
Yep. So I'll amend my motion to include all five of those talking points as mentioned by Mr. Murphy.
And I accept that. Remember?
Any further board comment or questions? Okay. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the public for coming out over these last year and a half and providing excellent feedback to make sure that these changes were made. Appreciate it. Give everyone a quick second. I think so. All right. Yeah. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, engineers' reports. We were all given a packet. Any que, board members, any questions on the engineers' report?
I have none.
I have no questions.
No questions? The, the only thing, Dave, if you could get like a summary on some statuses, some of the projects that were, the details of like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Paths and whatnot.
Yeah, so I, I can, I can just jump on, and I'm happy to follow via email as well. So the, the one project that there was a question on, that I recall, had to do with the Woodside Road multi-use path. The only remaining item. The only remaining item is, that was part of the original scope of work related to that project is some signage that needs to be installed. All other punch list items have been completed. Now, that's not the, I'll, I'll say additional work that was, was, was.
The post and rail and all that others.
Correct. That, that, again, we have not executed a scope for that. We, we didn't go out to bid for that. We were trying to get at some additional details relative to that issue. So that's an item, if you say, in, in terms of a subsequent phase, that's something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to.
Still open.
It's still open and something that we would have to pursue, you know, with, with our engineering consultant as, as we, as we move forward, so.
So like way into number nine, then?
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the board, so item 9A is consider the appointment of a township engineer and township traffic engineer, just for the benefit of, of the public and, and just a refresher for the board. As you'll recall, in January of 2025, the board had authorized the release of an RFP for township engineer and township traffic engineer. In February of 2025, responses were due. We received eight responses for the position of township engineer and six responses for the position of township traffic engineer. Both staff and the township Board of Supervisors independently reviewed those proposals and came up with a suggested interviewee list. Three firms were interviewed in April of, of 2025, and that brings us to this evening. So based on the collective sort of recommendation, the recommendation for the appointment of township engineer is to appoint HRG to serve as, as township engineer, and then a recommendation, a collective recommendation, to appoint Panoni as the township traffic engineer.
Okay. So that would probably be two separate motions?
Um, yes, it would.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion on the, let's start with the township engineer since it's listed first?
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint HRG as the township engineer.
Second?
Okay. Any comment or questions from the board? I'll just say thanks to staff for helping us organize this process and put out the RFP and do the reviews and ultimately help with the, the interviews, and thank you to all those who provided proposals. I think we had some great options to choose from. So with that, any call to question? All those in favor of appointing HRG as the engineer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Panoni as our traffic engineer.
Just a second?
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
Um, I just was wondering, are we still going to be able to wear appropriate access safe and engineering on traffic questions?
Oh, I believe so, but let's.
Yeah, yeah, that, that is the intent on, on traffic safety-related matters, traffic safety consulting, those kinds of things, that SAFE would continue to have some involvement with the township.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Good question. With that, I'll call to question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So Panoni is now our traffic engineer, HRG is now our township engineer.
Sounds good. Well, thank you very much. We'll coordinate with both of those entities and, and the outgoing engineer as well, and, and make sure we're considering transition items and, and the like, so.
Yeah, it would be helpful to, I don't know if there's a way to get a list of outstanding items or something that's a little more condensed than the engineers' report.
Yeah, we, yeah, and I, I've started to have some conversations, again, with the outgoing engineer regarding that, so they, they are prepared to have those conversations and prepare that doc, or provide that documentation, so.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next item?
So the next item is continued discussion related to a, a potential stormwater utility fee. Consistent with the board's direction, staff has been working on just sort of a general framework and, and strategy, if the township is inclined to continue this conversation. So there was a memo in your packet that outlined certain considerations. That memo and the contents of that memo have been translated into a PowerPoint presentation, so I'll just run through this quickly, and then we're happy to answer any questions that the, the board or the public may have relative to, to this issue. So the first slide just simply provides some sort of context and background relative to the issue and, and sort of what gets us to, to this point to potentially consider the levy of a stormwater utility fee. So as bullet one notes, as we've talked about, when we've been talking about budget and sort of fiscal position, the second-class township code caps the general purpose millage rate to 14 mils. The current general purpose millage rate that the township levies is at 13.88 mils. This would be essentially the, the source of revenue that would be available to invest in, in stormwater infrastructure if there was, again, some additional space and some additional capacity there. The next bullet just notes that, you know, Bucks County, again, as we've talked about, has not done countywide reassessments since 1972, so it has been going on 53 years since the county has engaged in countywide reassessment, which in turn is in part contributory to why the township finds itself up against its statutory cap under the, under the second-class township code. The next item just talks about available grants being insufficient to meet the township's regulatory obligations related to stormwater and maintaining the existing system, let alone providing sufficient funds to install new stormwater management infrastructure and to implement flood mitigation projects. And so just two items of note relative to that. We, we obviously try to leverage external funding to the maximum extent possible, but as was mentioned, in, in a recent meeting, you know, the township was positioned to receive $8 million in federal funding through the Community Projects Funding Program, and as a result of, of the impasse in Washington and the, the adoption of a continuing resolution, that $8 million is no longer guaranteed. Now, we'll continue to try to pursue that, but the actions in Washington have caused some uncertainty as it relates to, as it relates to, to that issue. Just to give you a sort of a state example, again, you know, we, we submitted an application recently to the Growing Greener Program, a watershed protection grant. We submitted an application request, a little over $341,000. We were awarded a little bit shy of $175,000. So again, while appreciative of the Commonwealth's support, this basically is intended to demonstrate some need for sort of self-sufficiency, if you, if you will, as it relates to.
Similarly, which was mentioned during public comment, actually, about the sidewalk. You know, we submitted a request for something like two and a half million, and we got four or 500,000.
We got 500,000. Again, appreciate it, but.
Great to have.
As you can see, not, not necessarily sufficient to meet obligations that are required obligations. The next bullet just simply notes that, you know, as, as the board is aware, there is no reoccurring and predictable revenue stream currently available to meet these obligations. Again, we, we try to leverage external support, but there's no predictability or recurring nature associated with external funding. Obviously, this community has dealt with increasing frequency and severity of storms. That has increased, that's projected to increase. So this is, again, an important issue for the township, given climate and related climate changes. The stormwater collection and conveyance system, this next bullet just simply notes, is, is largely a subsurface utility system, so it's, you know, essentially invisible, if you will, but as you can imagine, there are miles and miles of subsurface pipe conveying stormwater, collecting stormwater, conveying stormwater to its ultimate discharge points. And so as a, as a subsurface utility system, much like a water system, much like a sanitary sewer system, those collection and conveyance mechanisms require ongoing maintenance and capital replacement, and, and failure to maintain those and replace those systems, those existing systems, that has the potential resulting in, in even more severe impact to, to the roadway system, for example, and the integrity of that roadway system and the asset that is the township's roadway system. The next item just simply notes, many of these obligations are, are a result of federal and state regulatory requirements. Again, the township is subject to these requirements through the municipal separate storm sewer system or the MS4 program. And the final note is just, as, again, this community unfortunately has experienced over time and repeatedly, stormwater management and flood mitigation are community quality of life issues. So it, these are not just simply issues that relate to minimum compliance for regulatory requirements. These are issues that impact people's lives, people's property, and people's investments. So it, it is important to make sure that we're being responsible and we have the means to make the investments, the required investments in, in, in that infrastructure. The next slide just simply notes legal authority for stormwater utility fees. There's really two mechanisms in which they can be levied. One is under the second-class township code. The other is under the Municipalities Authorities Act. So if we continue those conversations, we can have conversations about the benefit associated with each of those enabling statutes related to stormwater utility fees. Just some general information regarding practice in Pennsylvania. There are 100-plus municipalities in the Commonwealth currently benefiting from stormwater utility fees. There was some recent conversation and recent levy in, in Middletown Township, but there is also a stormwater utility fee in, in Warminster. And then there are many communities in Bucks County considering implementation as we, as we are currently talking about this issue. The next just talks a little bit about, to provide some perspective on, on fee basis and data collection, and this is some of the work that, that we've, you know, sort of been doing, consistent with the board's direction. Again, generally, the basis for a fee is based on impervious surface area on each lot. There's a couple different billing structures. Two are noted here. One is the equivalent residential unit billing structure, where essentially a unit is based on the average impervious surface area of a typical single-family residence. So that generally, on the residential side, results in essentially a flat rate for residential, and then uses that average impervious surface area amount to calculate what a non-residential establishment may be levied. So there may be, you know, multiple ERUs, if you will, for more expansive properties covered with an impervious surface area. The next option is a tiered system of billing, which, again, establishes just basic ranges of impervious surface, and if a property falls in a certain range, they would be billed correspondingly. The next sort of final bullet on this slide talks about data collection methods. Traditionally, aerial ortho-photography has been used to calculate impervious surface and collect data related to impervious surface on, on lots. That was time-intensive. It was time-sensitive as well. Obviously, you can't, that was generally done through commissioning a flight, and a flight would obviously have to be done at a time of year, and then there's certain data analysis that needs to happen post that. There have been significant improvements in artificial intelligence with high-resolution imagery, which has created a more sort of cost-effective way in order to collect that data. And we started to have some conversations about AI and the use of AI and, and certain systems that are available. They're largely subscription-based systems that provide access to that information, and then there, there's the ability to do analysis within, within the program. The next just talks again, and I'm just sort of providing a general overview. Next talks about billing options. So there's essentially two options noted here. One is tax bill inclusion, so that would use the existing tax bill, billing infrastructure. There would be, this is a fee, it's not a tax, so there is a note here that there would be properties that are currently tax-exempt that would be subject to the fee, that are contributing to, to, to the stormwater management system and are receiving service as part of that. So those would, would have to, we would have to, if we went the tax bill inclusion method, we would still need to deal with separate invoices for tax-exempt properties. And then the next, you could do just everybody having a separate utility bill. That, that would be another option that, that could be considered, again, if we get to that point. And there are, there's just a general note, there are third-party billing companies that are, that are billing for other communities as well. So that's something to consider if, if we were to get to that point. This just talks a little bit about how the fee and, and sort of the basis for establishing a fee would, would be looked at and how you would go about sort of initial rate setting. This slide is just noting some of our obligations that we have relative to stormwater that would likely be contemplated in a stormwater utility budget. The first notes the cost of implementing our approved pollution reduction plan, just to provide some context on the level of magnitude of investment that's required under that plan, and this is information that is somewhat dated, so it's likely the costs have gone up beyond this, but, but as part of the township's permitting obligation, it, it has essentially a $3.3 to $4 million obligation to implement projects, and the required completion date of those projects is February the 28th of 2027. So not a lot of time and, and a number of projects that, that are required to be completed as part of our regulatory compliance under our existing permit. The township engages in street sweeping. Again, that is an activity that could potentially be included in a stormwater utility budget. The township owns most of the basins in the community, so there's ongoing basin maintenance that, that is going on, and those are costs that are quantifiable in terms of equipment and manpower that, that could be contemplated. Existing system maintenance and repair, obviously there's an existing system that, that, again, requires maintenance and repair. In addition to that, there are likely needed capital additions and expansions, expansions to the system, and then also flood mitigation projects that, again, are additions that don't necessarily relate to regulatory compliance. They help with regulatory compliance, but they're specifically relating to the community quality of life issues that, that we talked about. We have compliance costs, reporting requirements, and certain activity requirements under our MS4 permit, system condition assessment. Again, there is no assessment right now. Again, there is no assessment right now to that subsurface utility system. So generally, when communities have a recurring revenue system, a system condition assessment is a part of that. Obviously, it creates awareness and then it allows for proper planning as we're moving forward. And then you could also include programs set up, implementation, and costs associated with utility establishment, again, if the township would move in this direction. This just simply notes that, you know, if we were to establish a fee or the township was to go in this direction, as you collect additional information, there would likely be refinement of the fee moving forward to make sure that revenue is sufficient in order to meet those obligations, those expense obligations, to ensure that there's continued equity and fairness in terms of the fee. And then, obviously, you know, our priorities evolve and our obligations evolve. And so there's some recognition of that as well. So at this point, if the board is inclined to move forward with continuing the conversation, our initial recommendation from a staff perspective would be to obtain a proposal from the newly-appointed township engineer, Herbert Rowland Ngrubek, who has been involved in the establishment of over 60 of, I think, the 80 stormwater utility fees in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to provide a professional services proposal to look at the components and the costs associated with proceeding forward. Again, that would give you the information that you would need in order to make that initial decision as to whether to proceed forward with the professional services. And then ultimately, that would feed into any decision that the board may make relative to the eventual levy of a fee. So that's sort of the end of the initial sort of discussion or presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, there's a fair amount of work to be done if we're going to move in this direction, particularly if we're looking at implementation in the relative near future.
From an, thank you, Dave, for putting that presentation. That's super helpful. When we're looking at implementation, you know, this is not a set-in-stone process. I think it's, pardon the pun, it's pretty fluid in that it can change over time as we get more information. You're allowed to update fees, update process, update approach.
Correct.
Based on information gathered.
Correct. Yeah. And I think there's, yeah, I think, again, as noted, there, and we want to make sure that there's an understanding of that amongst, obviously, the board members, but also the general public, that there would likely be continued refinement as we move forward and develop a program.
Personally, I think it's very important. I think some of the townships that have done this maybe haven't used quite as, maybe wouldn't consider quite as equitable as it could be in terms of the process and approach to assessing fees, where it's sometimes put more on, the onus is put more on the residents than the commercial owners that might have more impervious.
Right.
Or were built before stormwater infrastructure was required, but yet you may have a large parking lot or something like that, that is kind of getting a free ride from the township or something. So all of that is to be worked out, I think. But I, you know, I do think it's important to start the process, right? So I'm wondering and get some recommendations and so that we can provide feedback. You know, we have that feature. Bless you. So that we can, you know, the board can provide whoever we, whatever we want to do with whoever we want to do, some feedback to further refine things. But are you looking for, one, could we, and two, are you looking for a motion to allow you to get a proposal from?
Yeah. I mean, I'll defer to Maureen. I mean, in terms of just receiving a proposal, there's no commitment being made. I mean, I think just through consensus direction of the board, if that's the direction, I can obtain that proposal. And obviously, that would have to be brought back before them.
Yeah, that's correct. There's no money being expended.
Or committed.
Simply requesting a proposal.
From a dollar amount perspective, is there any requirement to RFP anything, just from an anticipated dollar amount?
So professional service, you have no obligation to do that?
Make sure everything's above board and clear. I think, based on everything I know about, I've learned from about HRG over this, you know, they helped us, for those not familiar, they did help us with our stormwater ordinance over the course of the last year and change. Same firm. They were just appointing, and I think did a pretty good job listening to us about that and implementing some good changes with us. And they were just, obviously, appointed our new township engineer, so they're going to be here anyway. So I personally would be okay with getting that from, getting a proposal from them.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, we're happy, we're happy to do that. Again, I was just trying to be mindful of time. You know, obviously, as noted, we have not insignificant obligations to meet within a two-year period. So.
It's important that we get moving with something. So I don't want to, I'm not giving you, I'm one of five, so I just want to make sure that everyone is on board with at least getting a proposal so we can see. Go ahead.
If I could, yeah, I would be strongly in support of getting a proposal. Couple things from my perspective. Obviously, you know, we have incurred significant costs. It's something we continue to work on. We worked on it over this last weekend. So I do have a slight bias in terms of preferring that the fees included in your annual tax bill. And also, too, with, I do echo the chair's remarks, we're made to make sure commercial properties with large expansive impervious surface pay their fair share.
Yeah.
And that, as well as tax-exempt organizations who also use that same service. Fortunately, Lower Makefield's largely single-family homes, so it's not that big a deal. But generally, I would be very supportive of that.
Yeah. I mean, just based on sort of initial discussion, again, I sort of outlined the ERU method, which is based, it would essentially result in a flat residential fee. And then non-residential would be some multiples of that. Given the preponderance of land use in this community, being residential, single-family detached land use, I think in talking to Jim, it was, you know, of the 12,000 parcels, it may be upwards of 11,000 of those are residential, single-family parcels. It probably makes sense, just again, given the character and context, to look at a flat residential fee and, again, have commercial or non-residential parcels paying, you know, let's just say hypothetically, based on the impervious surface data analysis, it comes up that the average residential lot has, I'm just going to throw out a number, 2,500 square feet of impervious surface on that lot. If a shopping center had 10 times that, it would be 10 times that base fee, basically, is how it would be structured. Again, we also have, I don't want to say ease, but the tax bill inclusion, we don't have a large, non-taxable base also in Lower Makefield Township as well, which creates a little bit of simplicity in terms of that and using that existing mechanism.
Do we think, do we have an idea what the budget would be annually that we think we need for stormwater management fee? Meaning, that way, we have a rough idea of, because we're already getting questions from folks as to, you know, what to expect.
Yeah. I mean, I would just say that the general range, again, and there's only two in the county, if you will, is, one, Middletown, I think, levied at $5 a month, I think, is what they, $60 a year. Is that, is that correct?
I believe that's correct. Yes.
Warminster, I believe, is at about $10 a month.
Okay.
So anywhere from, let's just say, $15 to $30 a quarter is typical. And that's also generally typical of other areas of the Commonwealth where they're more common than in Bucks County currently.
Relate to, you know, currently, we're paying for all of our stormwater projects. If we're not getting a grant, we're paying through it from our tax base.
Correct.
So there, I'm assuming that there may be an opportunity, if we're going to generate a stormwater fee, you know, the tax base, there might be an ability to have a slight reduction because of those stormwater projects, or we could put that money towards something else of importance.
Yeah. I mean, that would be at the discretion of the board, based on what.
We'd have to look at, balance that out, too.
From a fund accounting question, could we reimburse the general fund for the increases in expenses we've had over the last couple of years?
There may be some opportunity for recapture of some of those expenses. So.
And it may be something, because, you know, we're not going to generate all the money day one, right?
Yeah.
So there may be, over time, there may be ways to do that and other things, depending on what we accrue over time and how we manage it, I guess.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that step one is reaching out to people who do this type of work and just getting generalized proposals from them. I'm wondering if as part of that, we could, would it be worth, is it appropriate to posture the idea of looking at it for just commercial properties, to see if we could, you know, raise significant or enough money that way? Not trying to hurt our businesses. People always say to me, you know, oh, these businesses must be paying so much taxes to the township. And, you know, they do to the extent that they do through a property tax, but we don't, some places, the municipality would get revenue from sales. That doesn't work for us. That is not how we get money. So as we think about this, and you said equity, Dan, and trying to make it as fair as possible, we do have a number of people who live in townhomes. And, you know, I would want to make sure we could somehow, if we move forward with this, and it does apply to our residents, try to make it as equitable for that as well. Because I'm, you know, I could see that it's possible, based on your townhome, that you have a lot of impervious space based on how much land you have, and yet probably not the same impact as a single-family home.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I mean, I think as part of HRG's review, they should provide us different scenarios.
Yeah. I mean, they would review all that.
Like, I don't know, for example, when we talk about townhomes or condos or whatever, in those types of cluster developments, if it's, if other townships assess a fee to the HOA and the HOA covers it?
Yeah. It depends.
In their own way?
Depends on.
What do they do with it through the individual owner?
I mean.
There can be so many different scenarios.
Correct. Correct.
Outlined, you know. And I appreciate the fact with townhomes, but many times with townhomes, there is a large common area for parking, which would, you know, ameliorate the driveways on a single-family home or whatever. So there are just lots of ways to look at this and to be as fair and equitable as possible.
I'm, you know, they're going to provide us with their recommendations, and I appreciate the feedback for looking at everything, see what we can do. So I know Supervisor Lewis said he was up for it when he had to leave the room.
Yeah. I mean, it's, why not look into it?
Just to start, right?
Yeah, just to start the conversation. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Sounds good.
You have your direction to start things off?
Yep. We'll obviously circle back and there'll be continued conversation on the issue. So thank you very much.
All right. Move, come on up. I know you're an old pro, but please state your name and whether or not you're resident.
I'm Russell Luzak, Lower Makefield. I have a question about the stormwater fee. So are all the stormwater mitigation projects on hold until you have the finances to finance the projects? It is only through this?
No, not at all. So we over, during our budget period, right, we assess taxes, I'm going to oversimplify, I know you know this, but we assess taxes to homes. They pay their taxes. A portion of our budget goes towards, and our public works director can probably tell you more detailed information, goes towards stormwater-related projects already. Now, does, are we covering enough of them with our tax? No, we're not, to be very frank, right? Would we, do we need to do more? Yes. So the most of, our manager was alluding to this earlier, but we've hit our, we're basically at our tax cap because we have other obligations in township. A lot of them due to salaries and labor issues, right? And we won't be able to avoid those at all. So every project, everything we buy or do, we have less and less of a window there within our tax cap to pay for those stormwater projects and other things, whatever they may be, but especially stormwater. So we're looking at, there's alternatives within the state code that allow us to look at stormwater fees to fund stormwater projects and associated projects, which is what Dave was summarizing. So that's what we're looking for. Are things on hold? No. If it's budgeted, we're moving forward. Would we like to have more projects moving forward? Absolutely. But until we have funds for everything, we just can't move forward with those additional projects, if that makes sense to you.
So you're no longer looking for grants? Like, is that?
Oh, no.
No, 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 no. We continue.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we'll continue. Irrespective of that, we'll continue.
We're always looking for grants from the state or federal government. But like Dave was saying at the beginning, we've applied for some, some of them have been awarded. We just haven't gotten as much as we need to complete certain projects. We all know about the sidewalk, right? The really big hit was at the federal level, where that was $8 million. That was purely focused on stormwater projects. That, knock on wood, doesn't totally go away, but it doesn't look, I'm not overly optimistic with the way things are going with, what do they call it, Doge or whatever they call themselves, and how they've cut things. So I just, I just don't know. So we have to be proactive in, you know, as much as we can, figure out ways to fund these very important projects to protect everyone.
We feel like we're on borrowed time. I mean, what you've done is great, that we've really averted flooding, you know, just this past Friday. But we're lucky that the rain stopped. If it didn't stop, we would have been in trouble. So, you know, anything you can do, I mean, we're eagerly waiting for the next step, the next phase of construction.
Me too. I'll say me too. I know that, I know you know that. But we're looking at not only, the next item on our agenda is actually related to Highlands, so you'll hear more about where we're at with that, too. But we're looking at comprehensive ways to address stormwater flooding across the township. And this is a great tool that we want to get rolling with very soon.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Hey, Lori.
Hi, Lori Gray, Lower Makefield Township President. So I get it. I really do. I understand Dave and Board of Supervisors, you know, all the things about we're at the mill cap and all of that. But I also question, and I think Supervisor Lewis brought it up, you know, where there, maybe then the way that we're structured is not the correct way within our budget, right? Like, I don't know if there's opportunity to change things. Like, it seems like we have a whole lot of money for things like parking wrecks and, you know, new heaters for pools and things like that. And that's all important and all of that. But is there a way that maybe that we need to structure the percentages of what our tax dollars are going to if there are different priorities within the township? And I don't know if that's an opportunity or not, because I, and again, I appreciate we're at our, just about our limit for the taxes. But we have, you know, the open, open space fee. We, now we've got this fee. There was the road fee. I mean, there's, you know, I don't, I'm not prepared to say all the different fees. Call it what you will. Whatever it is, it's money out of the taxpayer's pocket. So.
Yeah. I mean, the thing is, I guess, just generally, you know, many of the things that you noted are, and yes, they're coming out of the pockets of the people. But just to put in perspective, the general operating revenues, the general purpose millage rate, the amount of money that's collected in that, in terms of real estate tax, for general purpose, which is, which would be the source that would be used, like, we can't use a parking wreck special purpose tax for, for, my point is, you're not going to be able to replace.
And you can't change the percentages.
You can't change, you can't, you can't change.
Who defines that percentage then?
So I guess what I'm saying, let me just, so the amount of general purpose tax revenue that comes in, and James, you've spoken about this through the, but only pays for police service and doesn't even pay for.
I think the entirety of police.
Yeah. I believe in another two years, it's going to fully encapsulate our general fund.
So that's, that's a single service. That's one service that the township provides, right? So, again, not to assign blame, some of this situation in terms of the cap is directly reflected, or is directly the result of the county not doing county-wide reassessment.
I get that. I understand that. Yep.
The buying power of a mill is. The buying power of a mill is diminishing year after year after year after year.
And I do appreciate that.
So I'm not dismissing, you know, the parking wreck special purpose taxes coming out of people's pockets, that, that's, but there's no way for us to take, to reassign percentages. The millage.
And that was my question, I guess, yeah.
Millage caps are specific to the specific purpose.
And, and like, who, who defines that? When, I don't want to get into too much, but I mean, I guess it was my question. There's no opportunity for us as a township to define the percentages?
I mean, short, short of the township transitioning forms of government from a second-class township to another form of government, it's, it's limited in state statute.
Okay, that's really, that's what I wanted to know. You answered my question. I appreciate that. So I think it becomes even more prudent. And, you know, I've been coming to these meetings now for a couple of years, and, you know, and I appreciate what every, what you're all doing, and ensuring that our monies are not spent frivolously or on projects that have no end, such as the Taylorsville and the Woodhill Road, you know, bаско with the whole sidewalk and the bike path and all of that. So I think you guys recognize that, and I can see it anyways. And I just ask that we continue to do that, to make sure that when we get into these projects, and we get into these, and we're using our fees or additional taxes, or call it whatever you want, that you're really monitoring it and making sure that, and again, I appreciate when you put on the agenda, you put on what we're spending and whether or not it's budgeted and what budget it's coming out of, because it is important and it's easy, and I'm not saying you're doing this, and I'm not suggesting it, because I don't think you are, but it's easy to just say, let's just levy another fee. Let's just put on another assessment or another fee to the taxpayers. So that's why I just wanted to ask the questions, what the opportunities were. And so I appreciate the answers. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay. So with that, I think.
Yep, sounds good.
We have some direction and look forward to, hopefully, we get something fairly soon to discuss and, and move, move forward.
Sounds great.
All right.
It's everybody's favorite part of the meeting.
Senior Derrick.
Almost 10:30. We're, we're getting there.
You can do it. All right, item number 10 is about works. We have two items, both related to the Highland Drive drainage improvement. So Derrick, take it away.
That is correct.
Or Dave, whoever's doing this here.
Good evening. Item 10A, we have consider authorization, authorizing the acceptance of the amended proposal for supplemental design services from RVE for the Highland Drive Drainage Improvement Project at a cost of $35,675. That brings the amended total cost of the project to $213,650.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Derrick, can you very quickly describe what they're going to be doing?
So very quickly, yes. So I don't know if the, the board remembers, there was some additional scope modifications that RVE has performed on our behalf. Again, some retaining wall designs for property owners, for the property owner impacted. There was additional, I think, services in terms of survey work that they needed to do, arborist reports, things like that. The other big change, I guess, is we are asking RVE to take the project to bidding and contract preparations with the future contractor that is to be awarded. And then at that time, their scope of services would just be on more of a T and M basis of when and if needed for construction management and design questions, things like that, when our new engineer would take over the construction management and inspection services for the project.
Okay. Any board comments or questions?
And just to confirm, you're comfortable with that arrangement?
Yes, yes, very much.
Good question. Board comment, questions? Public comment or questions? All right, I'll call it to question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. Motion carries 401.
10B in front of you this evening is consider authorizing the release of and solicitation of bids for the Highland Drive Drainage Improvement Project.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay. So motion and second. Really quick, this is, we're putting out the bid to actually get a contractor to build the thing.
Correct. That would be the full replacement for Highland Drive, drainage improvements along Highland Drive, you know, that was contemplated and finally designed, permitted, ready to go.
The goal, construction date of approximately?
I do not know off the top of my head. I assume bidding, by the time it comes back to the board, give it a month and a half, so hopefully sometime.
I think, yeah, I think they're perhaps mobilizing late summer.
Which, the dry season.
Late, late, late August, early September, I think, is what, what they were contemplating at this point.
That's when they would be doing, okay. Yeah. So weather dependent, obviously.
Yes.
Okay. So hopefully, we don't get any hurricanes blowing through that time period. Okay. Any further board comment?
Just one real quick before we vote on the matter. Do you know that this is National Public Works Week?
Wonderful. I did not.
I'm here to bring that to your attention for a couple of reasons.
Thank you.
It's everyone's favorite part.
Because I received a text message today expressing gratitude for your and your team's fine work around Maple Valley, around the rain. It wasn't the people who are here, so.
It was me. I called you and.
You sent the text, yeah.
But I wanted to say thank you to all the staff, and I want them to know how much we appreciate.
The guys are wonderful. The crew is wonderful. They, they know what they need to do when they get out there as soon as possible to make sure everything's okay.
And we saw the pictures of them in the muck, so.
They, they jump right into it. They do.
Yes. So, thank you.
And not for nothing, just a reminder, folks watching, if you're doing construction project at home, you're building a pool or something like that, and you have a pile of dirt, if you're not protecting the dirt, it can flow into our storm drains and causes immense damage. And we've seen some of that happen.
Just that, yeah, not that, yes. And we had a, our contractor was out there yesterday with myself and a couple guys, jetting lines, clogged, completely clogged with leaves. So the importance of clipping the leaves off the road is imperative.
And, and we have to take pictures of that and remind people every fall during the leaf season, when they're sticking the, their leaves in the middle of the road, they will get washed off in our storm drains. Some people cover storm drains with them. It's just, I don't know why people forget, or they just don't do it. They don't want to leave it on the last couple feet of their lawn they have to put in the road. It, not only does it cost us, it's going to cost us money. It does cost us money, taxpayer money, stormwater, future stormwater fee money. And it just creates an unsafe situation generally, because it limits the road and width for all those things. Other folks are talking about those developments tonight, relative to kids riding their bikes and walking the dogs and shoulders and all that stuff. So.
Yes.
Off on a tangent, but.
Yeah, that's true.
It's, it's an issue.
Dan, just to build on that, I mean, we, we do have people who forget about leaves. They, they think grass clippings. I'm not really sure. You know what, I'll just be kind. Clean your storm basins, right? The little, little grates out in your sidewalks. Be kind to one another. If you see stuff blocking it, just pick it up, because it doesn't just magically disappear.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Kind of like telling my kids, the garbage disposal in the sink is not a trash can. Does clog things up. Anywho, it's getting late. We don't need to.
Need to vote?
Yes, we do. Well, actually, any public comment? Not sure I asked. Okay. Moving forward, let's get a vote. I'll call it to question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Harry Nun, motion carries 50. Let's get that rolling.
Thank you.
Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, not your favorite presentation of the evening. No. I'd like to, the minister, reflect that the supervisors present this evening did meet in executive session immediately prior to this Board of Supervisors meeting to discuss litigation and real estate matters. My report is very minimal. I'd just like to report that we did make an appearance at the zoning hearing board meeting this past Monday, May 19th. I'd like to tell you that your input does make a difference. There were two matters that you opposed. One was denied by the zoning hearing board, one was continued, and I don't know if that applicant will even really return. And I know that you've authorized us to appear before the next zoning hearing board meeting on June 3rd for very similar situated variances and requests, and we will do so. With that, really, I just note that it sounds like we'll be very busy in the summer and fall with stormwater maintenance fees and development agreements, et cetera. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your report. Supervisor reports. I'll go first. Nothing from the auditors, emergency management. I have to get them to meet soon. Planted Commission canceled their last meeting. The main thing was the item we already covered. Otherwise, we've talked a lot about stormwater management. So that's it for me. Supervisor Lewis?
Yep, just a couple of quick things. The disability advisory committee met last week and reviewed some items and continues, they're updating their marketing materials for the work that they do. The environmental advisory council also met last week and has developed some revisions to our tree replacement ordinance, our tree bank ordinance, and also has developed a draft chicken ordinance. That's right, yes, a draft chicken ordinance for consideration at this time. And it's for properties over a half acre for considering hens, hens only, no roosters, no roosters, just for the record. So that's an initial draft. Staff will probably be reviewing it. It's likely other committees may be reviewing it before it gets further consideration. But it's very early in the process, and I want to keep people up to date on that. And that's the extent of my report for this evening.
Thank you. Supervisor Lewis, Supervisor Ross?
No report.
No report, all right. Supervisor McCartney?
I have nothing to report.
All right. And last, but definitely not least.
The only thing I want to say is that Trenton Mercer had to cancel their meeting this week because of their members being otherwise occupied. So I have nothing else, because Maureen stole my thunder.
No discussion items on the agenda this evening. Any other business to report on? Nothing? All right. We had a couple of interviews tonight and a couple last time. We got some more coming. Any, I don't know that we have any appointments to rear, rear appointments just yet until we get through those, but right out there. All right. Oh, I forgot about this one. All right. So we had a public comment earlier, so this is second chance to have public comment on items that were not on the agenda. As another reminder, if you do have public comment, please state your name, whether or not you're a resident. Keep your comments to three minutes, and try not to repeat anything else that's been said on them. Anything? All right, well, thank you. No red light, so we're good. Yeah, appreciate it. And item number 17 is adjournment. So have a good night, y'all. Thanks for sticking it out with us.